So I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Select Board for Monday, December 9th. We're going to start at 6 o'clock with a work session around goals. And then at 7 o'clock, we will continue with our regular style of meeting. So I will go through the agenda and such, I think, at that point when folks are more typically tuned in. So we're in a kind of a strange section right now in that we typically have set up goals for a 12-month period because we're changing when in the year we want to do reviews and such. We're in the midst of an 18-month window. It's a one-time-only kind of deal. So we thought it made sense to look at where we're at in terms of what goals have been achieved and then see if there are any more we want to throw into the mix for the next six months. So we should all have the existing goals, the majority of which have been completed. I don't know if anyone wants to talk about or make any changes to any of the existing goals that are still outstanding.
I would say that the one goal, if you just want to go through them really, really briefly. You know, we're good on the Select Board function. I think the Board is functioning very well. I think you've definitely achieved that goal. Capital planning committee is up and running. Green Communities Application was filed on November 22nd. We're waiting to get the response from the state. The Level of Public Service, the chiefs came in and gave you a review on the, over the summer, so we completed that goal. You'll see in the budget presentation, one of the things that the police chief asked for, and the Board will have to decide if we want to pursue it, is two new dispatches to comply with his presentation to you back in August. Getting all the goals, the policies done. We are very, very close. We'll talk about that in a minute towards the end of this session. The operating budget of the town, the school district, we are in a, you know, I got my guidance and I'm meeting with the schools on Wednesday. We completed all the budget reviews. I want to thank John and Bud for attending all of our sessions. I thought the department has done a great job. I'll update the Board later on that. So I'd say we're in great shape there. Item seven, this is the only one I'd say we did not complete, and that's on the housing alternatives. And then the effectiveness of data management, we completed that goal, and town meeting appropriated funds, and now we're in the process of implementation. So I'd say the Board had a great 12 months completing your goals for the year. So the question is, do you want to add new goals for the next six months? Do you want to rest on your laurels?
All right. Thoughts?
I'd like to see us spend some time on the housing one and see if there's efforts we can put into that in the interim time. That's one item.
Can I speak to that?
Yep.
I also would like to see that. I put some things down in writing which I could show with you all at some point. But on the housing one, I also thought about that and tried to figure out if there are things we actually can do. It's been frustrating to kind of move this whole thing forward. But I came up with three housing-related things that I thought maybe we could do. One is to review the housing production plan when it is completed. Basically, to understand the need for affordable housing in Groton and the next steps to filling the need. So this is, the housing production plan is something that the Planning Board is doing. I think it's a requirement from the state.
It's mostly updated every five years. We are in the process of updating it through a grant from the MRPC.
Right. And my impression is that it is almost done. Is that your sense also?
Absolutely. The Planning Board held a public hearing, and I think Fran is working with Karen Chapman on the final touches. I expect within the next month it should be completed, but I'll follow up on that.
So I thought that when that comes out, I think it answers some of the questions people have about what's our current level, what's our current housing stock mix like, what is the target the state has set for us? What are some ways that we might be able to meet the affordable housing goals? And I think it was also going to identify maybe some parcel, town-owned parcels that might be able to be used to meet those goals. So given that there's a lot of work going into that, I thought we should commit to reviewing it and really thinking about the next steps that may or may not be recommended, I don't know, in that report. I also know that the Planning Board discussed just last week, and I was unable to go to their meeting, but they discussed potential zoning revisions that would allow for more accessory dwelling units because that has come back to them already through this process of creating the housing production plan. I certainly feel like we should understand and coordinate with them as required if they're going to consider bringing something to Town Meeting in the spring for a change. And then the third one was to work, I didn't quite know how to word this, but to work towards completion, final accounting, and a post-mortem analysis of the Boynton Meadows project. I don't know, again, exactly what we can do, but I'd like us to know what we can do and do what we can do on that.
On Boynton Meadows, I mean, that was eight years ago. The record is pretty clear on the project. It did create three affordable units for the town that went towards our housing stock. The town did not receive its investment back on the project, and I guess that's an issue. But $400,000 was invested into a project that created some housing. I think what a better goal, if I may, Becky, that the Board might want to consider is there's $500,000 sitting in the housing bucket for the Community Preservation Act right now. I think a goal that we may want to think about is what can the town do to leverage that $500,000 to create some affordable housing? Because that's the purpose of that money. It's just sitting there right now. I think that would be, I think the Board would be better served looking at that potential. Just a suggestion.
Well, I agree. I assume that that is part of the housing production plan. That considering that use of that money or application, considering applying for some of that money for something that has already been determined is a good idea. But I think with Boynton Meadows, yeah, most of us know what happened. We know at least what is public information about what happened, and we know that the money was lost or that we are not going to get our investment back. But I guess, I'm wondering if there's more information. There was supposed to be a final accounting done on that project when it's done, and I understand it's not done yet.
There's still one unit left to sell in the project, yeah.
And I don't know whether that market, that unit is actively being marketed or
I don't know.
We could find that out. We could find out when we might expect a final accounting. I mean, you know, there's people in town who would like to know more, as would I.
The Herald has written a lot of editorials on it, so it is something that's out in the public eye. But I would like to add, if the $500,000 sitting in that bucket isn't part of the housing production plan, I think we should think about how to leverage that money. I don't know how the Board, individual members feel about that, but that's a lot of money just sitting there.
Where did the $400,000 come from?
Same, it was the same bucket. It came from that housing bucket back then.
So we don't want to do that again.
Well, I don't know if we want to do that again, but
Two out of three, three out of five.
Well, that's the, I'm just saying, yeah.
I don't think we would, I don't think anyone would agree to use the money under this, under similar terms. But there are ways, there are other ways that we could potentially use that money. We would have to apply to the CPC, and the CPC, as we know, is one of the groups that has been asking some questions about is the public ever going to have any more answers about Boynton Meadows?
But the thing that everybody needs to understand about Boynton Meadows, very disappointing that we didn't get our investment back. I agree 100%. I'm very frustrated by that fact. But I think for $400,000 investment by the town into this project, we did get three affordable units, a three-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and a single unit. And that place has generated $110,000 a year in tax revenue to the town over the last 11 years, last eight years, on average, $110,000. So it
Is that per year?
Per year. So while we didn't get the $400,000 back, the town didn't just throw $400,000 away. There was a benefit, I believe, that the town received. I'm very frustrated. I agree with you, Becky, 100%. It's frustrating that we didn't get our investment back. But let's not lose sight of what we did get out of it.
Yeah.
But the taxes would have been paid anyway without our contribution or with our contribution.
The 27 units, how many units were in there, Josh? 21 units? I can't remember. Those 21 units wouldn't have been built. 18, 18, 14.
Everything about those 21 units, as far as I'm concerned, was in a closet someplace. Okay? I don't know if it was a threat or real intent at all.
Keep in mind, that property
People kept saying, oh, they're going to do a 41B, they're going to do a 41B. But I never saw any serious documentation that supported that position.
I agree with you, but that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you had the Kilbridge building. That was the only building on that property because the town invested $400,000 into it.
All the other units got built, which generated $110,000 a year in tax revenue for the town.
I think the, I think, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like $12,000 with the Kilbridge annual bill, tax bill at the time, not even that much.
Wasn't even that much.
It wasn't even that much. So because of the town's investment, that happened. That's all I'm saying.
Mark, I think that there is dispute about that. Let's just say that.
Look, there's a requirement within the investor agreement that the town signed that upon completion of the project, as far as I'm concerned, even though that last unit isn't sold, it's complete for all intent and purpose, there's a requirement of the developer to produce a final accounting of all expenses related to that. We had some interim accounting done, Mark.
Yep.
And the Affordable Housing Trust had hired a firm to do more or less a forensic audit of the expenses. And it was found that the expenses were extremely inflated over industry norms. I would like to see the Select Board ask both the Affordable Housing Trust and the CPC to take the responsibility to acquire that final accounting.
But from the perspective of the developer, they haven't sold the last unit, so they're
That's not part of the requirement. It was completed project.
But it has to be final, no? I'm not arguing. I'm trying to understand.
Final is, final is when something's built, as far as I'm concerned.
But how do they know what their profit was until they know that they've sold the last?
Well, they know everything except for what money would come in from the sale of that last unit. So they can give us an accounting up to inclusive of all the costs for constructing, hard and soft costs for the entire project, and what the sales were of all of the units with the exception of the unit that is highly unlikely to sell. There's one thing that he's yet to do is to be honest with us. And we haven't gotten a straight answer out of, out of the developer since we left Town Meeting and got the funds to invest. And, you know, I think it's extremely disingenuous on his behalf. And there is legal recourse that this Board and/or the Affordable Housing Trust could take. And I think that in the past, this previous Board members have been reluctant to take any action. And I certainly know that the Affordable Housing Trust was very much on the fence. But as far as I'm concerned, while this isn't taxpayer dollars created from direct taxation on people's houses, it's a byproduct of that through the 3% surcharge. And as a net result, and as one of the leading advocates at the time for the investment in going to Town Meeting and selling it, I feel there's a responsibility, at least on my behalf, and certainly on the Board's behalf, to follow through on this. And the problem is, is that I can't do it as one member. That if we're going to do something, we need to do that with a majority vote of the Board if we're going to pursue this.
So maybe as part of the goal then is if we do do the final account in Boynton Meadows, we invite the Affordable Housing Trust to a meeting and have a discussion on how to get that, and that's what you're just asking, right?
Yes, I think so. And if we and the Affordable Housing Trust were to meet, could we meet an executive session with Town Council and make a decision about how to proceed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I totally agree that that's what we should do.
Can I ask one question? Why do you see he's not going to sell it? Not that it matters in your point of view, but
Because we've made attempts to try and help him market the unit.
Sounds like he doesn't want to sell it.
There's no interest in it. There's no interest in a basement unit in the bottom of an old historic building that's partially fitted out where there's no parking to accommodate any use for it. It's problematic. The only reason it happened was the condition of the Kilbridge building was in such bad shape that they had to underpin the whole building with a new foundation. In the course of doing so, he decided on his own to make an arbitrary decision as the developer to turn it into a restaurant-type unit. It'd make a great pub if somebody had the vision for doing that at some point, but write down over $400,000 of money was expended on that unit. And we, as the Affordable Housing Trust, tried to negotiate with him as a settlement in terms of getting our money back was to get control of that unit and then let the town try and sell it. But he wouldn't budge.
Relative to other things we might do around housing, I guess I've maybe been here too long in town government, but there's an awful lot of talk about housing, but very little action. So if we've got $500,000, I would like to see us actually do something that creates some more housing.
That's what I'm suggesting, yep.
It's fine to do the research on all this stuff, and maybe we, maybe there is a little recovery or something from Broad Metal, but I would like to have the town see that things are happening to physically address putting roofs over people's heads.
So, John, as from the Affordable Housing Trust, I think that the housing production plan will highlight the 14-acre parcel at the bottom of Serendon Farms. And I think, based on a workshop that I went to six weeks ago with the regional housing people, that that might be a large enough parcel that the town might be able to entice the kind of developer who knows how to do these things to build an affordable housing development there. So I'm hope, that is my hope. That's what's going to come out of the housing production plan, and I agree with you. There's been talk and talk and talk. I've learned by my months on the Affordable Housing Trust that it is an incredibly complicated and bureaucracy-filled process to actually make these things happen.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
So if I understand what you're talking about for goals, a potential goal around housing is to review the housing production plan, consider next steps, work with the Planning Board on their zoning changes for more housing, to open up more housing, and then how to spend the $500,000 in the housing bucket. Separate from that, not really a goal, but something to accomplish, is the final accounting of Boynton Meadows, and I'll work with the Housing Trust to do that. So I'd say it's not a goal. That's just, I think you just want that information.
I think it's a goal.
Oh, okay.
I thought we wanted to set up a meeting as well.
Yeah.
With the Housing Trust.
Right, and, yeah.
And Town Council. The problem with Town Council is that this Town Council is far from up to speed with Boynton Meadows. And if you recall, that our former council worked on the investor agreement, has a rich, deep history of this. And my question would be, is this within the retainer if we ask them to come on?
Litigation, you would pay to bring him up to speed?
Know how long it'll take for them to read through all of this and get the history?
This Board does have the ability. I agree with you 100%. I mean, you spent $30,000 on the Johnson case getting up to speed. On this particular instance, this Board could hire a special counsel. And you could bring back the previous council who worked on it and have him complete that with you, since he knows it all. That might be something to consider. You'd still have to pay litigation rates.
I understand, but you don't have to pay for them to get up to speed.
They're all ready.
So I think that we should
Something to think about.
Schedule an executive session and cover that at that juncture.
Okay.
Without counsel, obviously, initially.
Yeah. So for me, I still, I feel like particularly given the six-month window that we're looking at, that Boynton Meadows isn't a goal at this point because we don't know what we're going to be able to do, if anything. But, John, you have your hand up.
I'm relying on information that I read in the Groton Herald of the meeting between the CPC and the trustees.
That's relatively accurate.
And it seemed to me like the answer to all the really key questions were, oh, that's executive session stuff. We can't talk about it. And so until all that's cleared up
Right.
And the information is visible and people can work with it, we're just fondling this problem if we're not getting anywhere.
But if we can meet an executive session, we may be able to make some decisions about proceeding.
I'll schedule something after the first of the year.
Sounds good. So kind of other things I had down on my initial jottings list, potentially to do a review of the CPC, is it, what is the program, CPC or CPA?
The Community Preservation Act, which is managed by the Community Preservation Committee.
Committee, okay.
Excuse me.
Just to review the CPA participation and understand what we're committing to, what matches are likely to be in coming years, what, what are our options and opportunities are within that program and then what they might be outside of that program. I think that with, with Serendon Farm coming up in another year or two, that this is the time to think about it before we potentially commit those funds again to something that is massively ongoing in nature.
When, when, when Serendon Farm gets paid off, that is going to free up $498,000 in, a big chunk of money out of that CPA each year.
If we continue to
If you continue to do it.
So, Allison, your suggestion is that we invite the CPC to come and meet with us and explain and answer our questions so that we have the information about the program and what it costs and what we get from it?
That would be part of it. I mean, I don't know whether they want to do research into what the future may hold for, for Groton within the, you know, in terms of what the state matches are looking like. You know, I think at some point, there's some consideration to be given to whether CPA participation is the best way to be using, you know, what is effectively tax money moving forward.
I think it's a good idea to have that discussion, and I, my knowledge of the CPC, CPA, the funding and all, is I have always turned to Bruce Isom, and he knows a lot. So I would definitely want him to be here.
He's on the CPA, CPC.
And, you know, I would assume that other members of the committee would be interested in coming. I don't know if there's someone else you think we should
Yes.
Get research or get information from?
I think we should reach out to the state.
Right.
And we should ask somebody from the state to come out. Not that the members of the CPC aren't a valuable asset. They absolutely are. But they've got the perspective of, while they understand what the law is, they understand what their responsibilities are to review projects and to make recommendations. I'd like to hear from somebody at the state as to what the future of this holds, how much money is out there, how many communities are there, what are the effects of raising the registry of deed recording fee, because they doubled it, and that was supposed to put more money in the pool. And let's see what we're looking at, because I think to Allison's point, that should we cut back from 3% to 2, 1, or even consider eliminating it, that we just need to understand what it is we'd be doing and not do it in a vacuum.
Right. And not end up missing, missing a bus of some sort because we don't have the information.
It's a great idea.
It's a good goal, yes. Just keep in mind, you take in about $500,000 a year. That 3% translates to about $500,000 a year. And we've been taking in anywhere from $175,000 to $200,000 from the state each year on the match. So that's a, $700,000, $478,000 has been committed to Serendon Farm. So that will free up, there's a lot of, you could do a lot of things with it, or you can give it back to the taxpayers.
And my understanding was at least a year or so ago that the state match, potentially the numbers were dropping and that other communities of Boston were thinking about getting in on it.
Which they did.
Yeah, so I think we just need to look at it, you know, with a fresh set of eyes, just like, just like we would have when we looked at it and said, yeah, we want to, we want to partake of this program. We should review it periodically to
That's not just going to be an agenda item. That's going to be a work session specifically around that.
Yeah, but that's why it becomes a goal and, you know.
It's going to be a workshop with the CPC.
I think we should do that, do a workshop with the CPC, get it televised, invite somebody else from the state program who's knowledgeable, who will come and help explain this and, and do it in such time that if we're going to take, changing what we're doing right now, whether it's percentage-wise, eliminating, under consideration, we want it to be done before the public hearing for the law for the spring.
Why?
Because we'd want to do anything that we would consider doing to correspond with the change in fiscal years. So by taking action on it in the spring would allow us to set up for July 1st of
But we need to pay off, sorry.
If you're going to change, if you're going to change the percentage or if you're going to eliminate the CPC, the process to change is the same as the process to get in. You need to tell me you vote in a ballot. So there's, it's a one process. I don't think there's, this is something that would probably be for the following year.
Couple of years, a year or two ahead, yeah.
But I think it'd be a, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't begin.
Oh, I definitely want to begin. Oh, absolutely.
But I don't think that there's the rush to, you know, like, we want to get something on the ballot this spring or we want to prevent something from going on the ballot. We don't want to prevent.
I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just saying that we need to get the timelines together, and you need information.
Yeah, because you want to eliminate the 3% until at least fiscal '22.
Yeah.
Because you got to pay off Serendon Farm. That's a good goal.
The other one I had on there, and I don't know whether it rises to the level of being a goal per se, but I, as we look at our budgets and moving forward and sort of for the next few years, you begin to hear folks who are having trouble affording or anticipate having trouble affording their tax bills. And obviously, one of the alternatives is to reduce spending or, or not grow spending. But I think it's worth our Board understanding and then being able to publicize what programs there are that are in place, what alternatives there are. My understanding is that there's a program where you can basically kind of pay your taxes through putting a lien on your home and then when you sell it eventually, or when, you know, the owner moves out.
Jonathan Greeno does an excellent presentation twice a year at the Senior Center, in which he comes in and he puts a great presentation with all the potential exemptions, all those types of programs. It might be worthwhile as a goal to bring Jonathan into a public hearing, spend an hour having Jonathan explain all of the exemptions and programs and things like that. He's excellent, man.
Yeah.
Seniors, I get letters of appreciation from the seniors all the time thanking us for Jonathan's
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Are there, and you may not know off the top of your head, but are there programs that exist in the state that we don't partake of?
I, Jonathan, I don't have that off the top of my head, Allison.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I don't know that it needs to be a goal, but
Might not have those a goal.
I mean, the business of turning your taxes into a lien is not much different than reversing a mortgage.
Right.
And I don't know that we've had anybody, do we have anybody that's reversing?
Taxes? Oh, yeah, there's a couple in the program. What happens is they defer their taxes until they either pass away or the property changes hands. And then the town has a lien on the property and gets its tax revenue in X amount a year. So it's similar to reverse mortgage, but I think having Jonathan come in and explain things is great.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. What other ideas do folks have?
Well, I wrote this one up, thought this one up before I saw the agenda, and maybe this will be proved to be moot, but complete the review of all Select Board policies by the end of January 2020. And I had
I'm hoping to do that next Monday.
Right. I, I was not under the impression that next Monday was not going to be a regular meeting.
It's not. It's a work session to go over policies and processes.
That's what's proposed.
That's what's proposed. You haven't responded. That's the proposal.
Right. Okay. Well, in any case, I, I listed the ones that we're not done with. The Town Manager Review.
Yeah, they're on the agenda.
But I had more than are on the agenda. Anti-harassment.
That's all on there.
Discrimination investigations.
That's all in there.
Liaison.
Yep.
The naming town parks, commons and fields.
Yep.
Social media, meetings on holidays, and financial policies. Did financial policies get?
Those are all in the list and the agenda.
I'm sorry. I didn't think that they all were. Sorry. So it seems like a lot, and maybe we can get them all done next week. I kind of doubt it myself, so I'd like it to still remain as a goal that we get them done by the end of January.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about taking that off.
Becky, in my Town Managers Report, I listed all of them.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. It's on my same list.
So I was going to, well, when you're done talking about your, your goals, I want to ask a couple of questions on some of these to try to focus next Monday if we're going to do it or not. We'll talk about it before Saturday. To try to focus next Monday if we're gonna do it or not. We'll talk about it before Sunday.
Based on one of the policies that we, I can't remember how we left that, this one, but I thought. We, one of our goals should be to set up a um, a schedule for a meeting with the appointed committees on a three-year rotation.
So that's part of the meetings with the advisory committees, right? We need to figure out which committees they are, how frequently they come in, whether they all come in. Whether they come in automatically, whether we request them, kind of how that all works.
And I also had one policy-related item. Um, I wondered if. We should review with the town manager all of his policies because we want to make sure that they are all in alignment with ours.
Are there policies that are?
I I don't understand what she's asking. I'm sorry. Becky, I don't understand what you're saying.
Uh, well, I believe that you that your hiring, your posting hiring policy is not in alignment with ours. And and it just made me wonder if there are others that might not be.
I I I'm sorry, my hearing is awful. My hiring policy is not what?
The recruitment.
Yep.
Posting vacancies.
Yep.
Your policy differs from ours.
No, it doesn't. We're all in agreement on that.
No, I don't think that's true.
It it is true.
Our policy, we took out the part about sometimes not posting. We said all vacancies will be posted.
My policy, because that's the board's policy.
Your policy as it's written does not say that. It says that sometimes you might decide not to post them.
When I come back to the board and ask for permission not to do that.
Shouldn't we be discussing this under the review of policies?
We can do that. Maybe we want to have a town manager goal to to review policies after ours are finished and make sure that they're all, I don't, I don't know.
My policy is your policy, so whatever you guys.
Understood. Um, other select board goals?
It's maybe goes without saying that we'll be working on preparing a a second round application for a green communities grant. Will that begin? When would that begin, Mark?
Well, we have to, first I want to get us into the program. I'm hoping to. Then, um, once we do that, we submitted a list as part of our application. When we get the hundred and sixty-five or two hundred thousand dollars back, we have to decide on what on that list we're gonna knock off. And then, once we do that, we'll prepare for the fall for a second round of 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 a, an application in the fall for programs. So I think that is something we should put on next year's goals, but yeah, I agree with you, hundred percent.
Did we make the fifteen percent?
We finagled numbers. We put in our application, it was close, like thirteen point something percent.
What did, what's the fifteen percent?
We had to show a fifty percent reduction, threshold reduction of fifteen percent on our initial application in order to qualify. So we may not qualify with the fifteen percent.
We may.
I'm not following you.
The projected savings.
Right.
Didn't equal fifteen percent.
The projected savings of what we'd do the first year with the money, is that what you're saying?
No, it's what we can do in five years.
What we can do in five years.
What we can do in five years.
Ah.
And it came in at thirteen point something.
Right.
And it was pointed out that that's a, that's a significant weakness in our application.
Correct.
So we got our fingers crossed that it'll still be interesting enough to them that they'll.
Uh huh.
Let us into the program, but it isn't a slam dunk yet.
Correct.
So I had some other questions about that, but it probably, this isn't the right place for them. I'll ask them during the agenda.
Okay, I mean, depending on what they are, we may even need to wait and see whether we get into the program before we can start setting next goals, but.
I agree with that.
Because we've got goals for the first year already.
That was part of our application.
Right, there it is.
Yeah, man.
Yep.
Yep. Any other goals for select board or town manager, although they're.
I think they'll keep you busy for six months.
One that we might be able to do in the six months, um, it seemed to have. Deviated from what used to be the case that all these sign boards on Main Street weren't supposed to be there. And each week I see another one popping up somewheres. And, um. It's inconsistent with what the rest of the town has to comply with from our sign bylaws. Um, I just can't see how we can hold people to what color paint they can put on their house. And and then put up all these sign boards all over town, all over the historic.
Yeah, I know, that's the, that's the HTC's.
Grossly inconsistent to me.
That's the HTC's enforcement.
Last weekend, a sign popped up at Moysens on Aaron's products.
On what?
Aaron's makes, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about commercial signs, not the nonprofit signs that are on town.
I'm talking about all signs, all signs, because now we have one for the stage, the the Groton Station Restaurant.
Oh, right, right.
We've got somebody adding like a nail services up here, um.
Down the other end.
Yeah, and on, and on the other end, so.
Who's enforcement is that? Is that the sign committee?
Nope.
No, that's the problem. It's the di- it, the.
It's the Historic District Commission.
Historic Districts Commission controls.
How many members do we have on the HTC right now?
Yeah, that's all.
Why don't we send a letter to the HTC, ask them to enforce the sandwich board signs, uh, consistent with the policies within the Historic District.
Review it and let us know what you're gonna do.
Yeah, review it and let us know what you're gonna do.
There's a lady across the street who puts a sign out trying to reserve a parking spot for her business.
Yeah.
Um, right in front of where the old post, in the.
Yeah.
Old post office. Um, it's just getting out of hand.
Yeah.
I will send a letter.
So, the, on town property, as in, in front of Prescott and on the commons. Uh, you, I thought you were the decision-making person.
On, not within the Historic District Commission.
Not within the Historic Districts.
Yeah, not within the Historic District. That has nothing to do with me or the or the land use departments. That's solely with the HTC. On town property like up at, um, where we have the Christmas lights, down at, um.
You mean the common at Old Air Road?
Correct. Those, we we control that. We we get.
So the common at Old Air Road, the common on Hollis Street?
Yeah.
Yep.
The one on Parkview Street.
On Pleasant Street.
Common up here. Those are the four commons that.
That we control.
That you control, so actually Prescott and Town Hall.
That's with the HTC.
So is it with the HTC?
Correct.
So the sign in front of Prescott, um, for, um, their base opportunities, and leave the HTC granted them in one year.
Right.
They did.
Okay.
That sign is permitted.
But that's what precipitated it. That started all these others popping up.
Once they saw that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if they can just review what's going on and let us know. Sounds good. Any other?
And, um, on those commons, just while we're on this, that you do control, you say yes for two weeks to nonprofit organizations in general?
One week at a time. They're only allowed, they can do two commons, up to two commons for one week, and then they can switch them for a second week and do the other two commons. But one week.
That's one week, not two? One week, okay. I thought it was two weeks. That's why Don's in charge.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so I will write these up and bring these back to you for approval at your meeting of the twenty-third.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought you'd wrap that up.
We're meeting on the twenty-third.
Is a little bit challenging. I thought we were not meeting on the twenty-third.
We are meeting on the twenty-third. We're not meeting on the thirtieth.
I had said early on, I hoped we would not meet on the twenty-third. I had a conversation with Allison, she said, no, we're not meeting on the twenty-third.
I don't know that that is determined, do we have agenda items at this point?
For the twenty-third?
Put them on next week.
Well, hold on.
What do we have on the twenty-third?
I thought we were gonna try and meet every other week, which would be the twenty-third.
That's why I said the twenty-third.
Understood.
I'm sorry if I mis- misunderstood that.
No, so Allison, I did say, I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-third.
Yeah. When I sent, on September ninth, I sent out a schedule to the board with an upcoming meeting schedule to comply with our policy. And I had us on September twenty-third as a regular, December twenty-third as a regularly scheduled.
And at that meeting, I said, I hope we will not meet then, I will not be here, I will be traveling.
Okay. Um, I don't, I didn't know if the board wanted to go the twenty-third and the thirtieth. Because that would be two meetings in a row that you want to meet, but that's fine, if that's what you want to do. Nope, that's fine with me.
It depends, to me, it depends on what's on on the agendas.
We have nothing, we have nothing scheduled for the twenty-third at this time. Other than, other than remaining licenses which we can bring next week.
Not meeting on the twenty-third?
You have to tell me. I have us meeting the sixteenth in a work session and the twenty-third in a regularly scheduled meeting.
I won't be here.
On which one?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. And let's not meet on the twenty-third.
Sounds like we're not meeting.
Well, because that was the original impression that I had as well, so.
I I apologize, I I thought it was every week.
But the sixteenth then has to be.
Well, the sixteenth will have to be more than a work session.
Right.
Yeah, let's have a meeting, full meeting on the six, next Monday.
We'll start at six with a work session.
Yes.
And then we'll go into a regularly scheduled meeting, if if there's anything. There might not be anything, other than last-minute licenses.
As a, I see that we had a under, we had a holiday schedule under the, um.
The agenda, yeah.
Holiday policy. How about if we just as a goal, set a permanent schedule as to how we're gonna deal with meetings. Around Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, et cetera.
Thanksgiving is a lot easier than Christmas and New Year's because it's a different day every year. So it gets a little confusing. This is true.
Yeah.
But I was gonna suggest the same thing, that we should routinely schedule the Monday after Thanksgiving as a workshop session. I understand the reason that we don't generally have a regular meeting is getting an agenda prepared and posted before Thanksgiving is a challenge. But we always have things that we're backed up with and we should assume that we'll meet on the Monday after Thanksgiving for something. Either it has to do with goals or policies, or if low and behold, we come up with it and we don't have anything, we can cancel it. But I think we should assume that we would use that as a work session.
So I think we're trying to get too many things done at once, in terms of when we're meeting and not meeting. I think the the meetings on holiday, I think it was left that. Becky, you were gonna reach out to Interfaith Council and get a listing, I thought.
No, someone else was gonna do that. I wasn't.
All right, I will reach out to the Interfaith Council and get a list of kind of what are the the major. Holidays that we should be watching to avoid.
Yeah. Whoever it was, I said I have Amy Deacon's email address.
Yeah, I thought you said you would do it, but.
Me too.
I will. I'll try and track her down.
Okay, so. For next week, I will write up these potential goals for the board to sign off on them.
Thank you.
And then, as far as the policies that you have left to review. The town manager review policy and the anti-harassment policy and the investigations policy, town council would be here to discuss those with you. Um, I I think you can a- a- address those relatively easily with him, once he he gives his feedback, he will be here, right?
Um. I'm gonna add some information in.
I'm sorry?
Um, so I, with Allison's permission, had a conversation with town council about the anti-harassment policy. Um, when we had talked about it, I'm pretty sure that we had said we want this to apply to everyone. Um, not just employees, not just paid employees. It seemed like a really easy thing, and when I suggested that to Peter Berry. As it played out, it turned out that. The policy as written is mostly based on an anti-discrimination policy, which is a federal requirement. And it only applies to people who are in protected classes. So it couldn't just say it applies to elected officials and the public also. Uh, after some discussion, he and I, I think, agreed that the better approach was to. Divide that anti-harassment policy into two policies, one that would be discrimination, one that would be harassment and bullying and intimidation.
Is he gonna provide those drafts?
And he was going to do that.
And I assume he'll do that in advance so that we're there in our packet and like, yeah, so that's great.
I hope so.
The social media policy, I was going through my mounds of policies earlier, is it called the social media policy? Or is it the email and communication?
Nope, it's the social media policy. I sent that out under a separate.
I'm, absolutely, I'm not.
But Allison, it was never approved, so it's not an existing policy. It was a draft that was created and we never discussed it. So that's why you might not be finding it.
Oh, I, no, I'm, I'm pretty sure I know why I'm not finding it.
I gave it, I gave it to town council for town council's input, and town council had no comments on it, thought it was fine. Josh, you had some issues with it. I believe you raised it at our last meeting, and that's why we didn't go forward, it's over.
I have yet to read it through.
You need to decide what you want to do with that.
Okay.
My only other question, as we probably will not finish next week, um, the financial policies. The finance committee has approved them, the finance team has approved them. There was one member of the board that had concerns with them. The question is, since we've already gone through them and the finance committee has signed off on them, and technically the finance committee's financial and the board's finance policies. Allison, do you still have concerns with those policies, or is this good for another year?
I mean, I I still have the concerns, but clearly this is not cyclically the right time to be making changes, so.
So I'll take this off the list. Okay, I'll take that off the list.
For six months, so we can talk about it.
But it's, it's not, we're not gonna.
We have to review it next October.
Don't you want us to reaffirm and approve?
That's fine.
So leave it on until we do, and let's just do it next week.
There's, I'm gonna present it to you as approved by the FinCon, that was my, okay. And then with regards.
That's, that's gonna be the law of the land until we do come up with.
Yeah, I understood.
You're required by child to review them every Oc- October, so we will review them next year.
But I'm saying what we have now.
Is is gonna be the policy.
When we put this stuff up.
Correct.
Onto.
Correct.
Ecode.
Yep.
What we have now is what's gonna go up there.
Correct.
The initial.
Correct. Yes, that's, that's what I was asking you confirm that. And then the liaison policy. That one is a discussion of whether or not you want to continue it. That's the only issue you have with that one. And then the, um, select board operational policies and procedures.
I think we should just ditch.
I would like, huh?
I'm sorry, I think we should just ditch that. I think we covered everything in other policies.
Just gonna say that, you and I are simpatica. I say take that off, you don't need those anymore because everything in there is covered under other policies.
Right.
So I would take that off the list.
It was duplicative right from the start.
So we're good.
Yeah.
And now, um, on the naming, the parks.
Yes.
In common, I've had some communication with Don Black and I asked him to provide us a list of all of the parks, commons and fields. Um, and and that then, I think the discussion is more about the process for naming such things. But we, we need to know what we have already.
Okay, good. So I thought, well, maybe we'll make some good leeway next week.
Yeah, maybe there is a chance.
Maybe there is a chance. I will, can somebody, Becky, did town council tell you who's gonna get those draft, two draft policies to you? By this, by next week?
We didn't have that specific, uh, an agreement. You might want to check in with him or somebody should. I think he was going to prepare two different.
You know what he was gonna do based on your conversation. I might suggest that you follow up if that's okay.
You want me to do that?
See, that's why, well, that's why the town council policy says that. Anything coming from town council should go to the town manager for coordination issues, so. When I hear about something like this and I don't know what's happening.
No, he should send it to you, but I'll, but I'll call him and check in.
John?
Um, in the interest of, um. Using our time well next week, um, I just want to make people aware so they can think about it. Um, I've done a lot of thinking on the liaison policy business and, um, I pretty well got myself convinced that. We should continue to maintain liaisons with every other elected organization in town. And all the ones that aren't elected, let them fall.
I think it's.
Because we need to have those liaisons as part of getting the orchestra kind of all on the same sheet of music. On initiatives around town. So just something to chew on.
Yep.
Well, I totally agree with that.
Can you put mark in our packet what the list of lia- of liaison, of elected?
Yep, I have, John already gave me his list.
Okay.
I just took it out as a report.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
So, we're gonna run out of time before we ever talk about goals for the select town manager.
Um, yeah, if there, if folks have some, that's, I thought we were done with goals, but.
Uh, I thought we were discussing goals for the town manager also?
Well, we, I thought, we've had so much confusion with this. Do I have separate goals or my goals, your goals? And it seems to me that my goals should be your goals, because I'm the one that has to carry out. And coordinate your goals. Now, we've had this discussion, I believe, three times. Can we nip it in the bud now and decide if that's the case or not?
John?
Um, I I think there, there is a strong argument, um, for there, there being. Goals for the town manager. And those goals may be, make this work better or make that work better within the administrative side of town government. And then we have the goals that the select board takes under its wing and and pushes on. Um, so it's, it doesn't seem wrong to me that there be, um. At least the potential to have some goals for the town. some goals for the town manager.
Yep.
So, yeah, we probably have to have a little more discussion about that.
I agree with that. I don't know where others are at.
Yeah, and I had some specifics on the, uh, coordinating and helping the board function better, but I don't think we should get into them at this point. But, but I do think we should have some discussion about this for the next six months, and I, you know, I'm interested to hear an update on the succession plan for the building commissioner, um, 'cause that's gonna come up again, I guess, I assume, this year. But I think there, there are some specific things I would like to see change in some of our interaction.
Okay. So is that something logistically, agenda-wise, that we can put on with next week's workshop, or is that-
It's up to the board.
It may be too much on one plate.
Oh, that's what I'm wondering, but I'm not sure when-
These have, haven't in the past gone, we're done.
True. Um, we're meeting at six next week?
Correct.
To start off?
Yes, so I, I, well, if you tell me that, I'm-
Right.
I'm asking you if you wanna meet at six.
We're, we're meeting at six.
Yes, with town council.
Yep.
Might I suggest that we meet at six and, for the work session, and not begin regular session until the completion of going through both the policies and the goal discussion? So let's not have a hard stop at seven o'clock.
There won't, there's really nothing scheduled, so we could do that.
And we'd have to do it the other way around, Josh, because we can't have a floating start time and stay within the posting requirements.
But I don't think we're-
We could do the business first and then go into-
Or continue the business at the conclusion of regular session, if you wanna have a, a hard start time.
Yeah, I think we have to have a hard start time.
I just would like to see us wrap this up, and it's-
I would too.
Mark, I didn't think we were planning to have a regular structured select board meeting.
Well, you might have some, you might have some permits that need to be approved.
Yeah, I'm not gonna schedule anybody on the agenda for next week. There's no specific agenda item, so you won't be inviting in anybody. It'll just be maybe some last minute licenses and anything else that comes up. There really isn't anything going on other than the budget right now.
Okay.
So that's what we're working on.
So can we, can we do those, the licenses and things outside of like the regular televised structured meeting?
You could do whatever you wanna do it, absolutely.
So if anybody wants a one-day liquor license in between now and the end of the year, better show up now.
We'll be in public session, we'll all be in public session.
Get it in fast.
There's not gonna be a specific time card, is what I'm saying. When you get to it, you get to it.
You know my point.
Okay, so it sounds like next week's workshop will be policies with, with council and without potentially goals, finalization, and then any other-
Correct.
License pieces that-
That come up, that you don't do tonight.
Right, but it won't be a regular televised meeting?
Oh, you don't wanna televised?
It can be tel- I, I thought it was like a workshop.
It is a workshop. We don't ordinarily televise workshops, but if you're gonna go into a regular meeting, do you wanna just televise everything next week? You tell me what you want.
I think we should.
Noah, can you be here next Monday at six? Look at the excitement coming from Noah over there.
You're walking up.
So Allison, we'll televise it, is that all right?
Yeah, yep. All right.
Hey, Chief, wanna take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we have a few minutes left, we'll be back here at seven.
Mark.
We will consider ratifying three appointments for the town manager. Folks, thank you. We will consider some other appointments rather than ratifications. And then we will review and potentially approve annual licenses. We will discuss the useful life of a new fire truck, which sounds like a children's book. And then we will have a fiscal 2021 budget update. We have a 7:15 public hearing, a continuation of the fiscal year 2020 tax classification hearing. Under other business, we will discuss potentially authorizing one member of the board and the town manager to sign off on payroll and expense for the next 30 days per the charter, just for logistical reasons. We then have our typical ongoing issues list, any liaison reports, and we have one set of minutes from November 25th to discuss review and potentially approve. Okay, so announcements and questions, comments? Anyone have a word?
I'd just like to, with the storm Sunday into Monday, Monday into Tuesday, wanted to thank our first responders, the police, the fire, town workers, the highway department, I think did a great job. Forty-eight hour storm, the amount of snow we got this early in the year. I took a lot of phone calls from people that were asking for help. And I asked some people to be patient, and they were. They did a great job. It was a long storm, and I just want to publicly acknowledge the great job that they did. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hopefully, the remainder of the Stearns this year will be in three-inch increments.
Or none at all.
None at all is fine as well. Any other announcements?
Nay.
Questions or comments from the public?
I'm sorry.
All righty. Then we will move right into the town manager's report.
Chief, you want to come up? Casey, you want to come up? So tonight, I'm making several appointments. We're going to start with Casey O'Connor, who's a patrol officer for the town of Groton Police Department. Casey has been a reserve officer for how long now?
About a year.
A year. And because of a shortfall of officers in the department going through some injuries, retirements, things like that, Casey has taken as a reserve officer on real full-time commitment to the town, and she's been working a lot of shifts. And she's really proved herself really, really well, and we're excited to bring her on board as a permanent officer within the department. I hear you kicked butt on your physical agility test last week, so congratulations on that. I shouldn't use a different word, but then I remember wrong cables. And so, we're going to get Casey into the police academy in January?
January 6th.
So I'm very, very, very excited to bring Casey on as a full-time patrol officer for the town of Groton. So I would ask the board to consider ratifying that appointment this evening.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I am very happy to make the motion. We ratify the appointment of Casey O'Connor as patrol officer. Is that how I worded that correctly?
Yep.
The Groton Police Department.
Cross-trained.
All right. So that motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I just think it's really wonderful that we have some diverse candidates in lots and lots of ways. And I've had some interaction with Casey, and I know we saw a report that she wrote about one of the vandalism incidents, and happy to have her with us.
So we're excited to send her off in January, in 22 weeks later?
Yes.
Twenty-two weeks later, she'll be a full-time sworn officer of the department. So I'd ask you to make the appointment effective?
January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Casey. Congratulations. Now you have to shake everybody's hand. Come aboard again.
So Takashi, Kara, you guys want to come up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Maureen Adama had resigned as our land use administrative assistant. So following our policy, we advertised both internally and externally for the position. We received around, I think, 32 or 33 applications for the position. I set up a search committee made up of as many people in the town hall as possible because we wanted to scare the candidates when they came in. There was myself, there was Takashi, there was Ed, our building commissioner, Nick, our conservation administrator, myself, Dawn, and Melissa. We interviewed nine candidates for the position. It was very competitive. And we decided to bring Kara Perkshank, I hope I can say your name right, on as our land use administrative assistant. She has, we were looking for somebody that had good business sense, a background in the trades. She ran her own company for a while. She has a lot of good experience. She's worked for a school district as an administrative assistant, so she has a lot of, and a teacher as well, so she has a lot of good experience there. We think she's going to be a great addition to our staff. So I'm pleased to bring Kara forward as a land use administrative assistant. And I would ask the board to consider ratifying that appointment tonight effective immediately. She'll probably start December 30th?
30th, yep.
December 30th. Is there anything you want to add to that?
No, Mark summarized the process very well, and I think he summarized Kara's background very well as well, so nothing more to add of it. We're very excited to bring her on board.
So I'd ask the board to ratify that appointment this evening.
I'm happy to make a motion, but you're going to have to help me with the last name. So I will make the motion, and I'll say your first name.
Okay.
You'll say your last name.
Sounds good.
And you will. Well, I move that we appoint Kara.
Ratify.
I'm sorry, we ratify the appointment of Kara.
Perkshank.
To be a land use assistant, administrative assistant.
Second.
Effective?
Effective.
December 30th.
December 30th.
Any comments or questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Should we get to shake your hand, too? This is a good opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Tom, Chris?
From Groton.
So we recently had a retirement within the Public Works Department of a heavy equipment operator. And so we advertised the position, received several applicants. Tom Delaney, along with Troy Connolly, our foreman, and our public, our human resources director interviewed several candidates. And they recommended to me that we appoint Christopher Greathed as a equipment operator for the Public Works Department. Chris has a great background in this, and I had a chance to sit down and talk to him. He's eager to get started. He's very excited about joining the Groton Public Works Department. So it's a pleasure that I appoint Chris as an equipment operator for the Groton Highway Department. And I would ask the board to consider ratifying that appointment this evening as well. Today, well, today.
Truck driver laborer.
Truck driver laborer, I'm sorry. Truck driver laborer effective immediately.
Yeah, I think he's, Monday. He's complaining on starting Monday, but.
So December 16th.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we ratify the appointment of Christopher Greathed as a truck driver laborer effective 12/16.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Well, now you realize you slept through your last slow storm.
I'm aware, sorry. I don't sleep normally, so it should be fine.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Should stand up on me.
So what's the status of the highway garage at this point?
I'll give an update during my, I'll go and update.
So we're not using that yet, boy.
No, no, not yet. I wish we were. It's been, it's been hard juggling between buildings, I'll tell you.
So.
Now I'll close you going.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Before we move on.
Yep.
I just had a couple of questions about vacancies and hiring and all. Do we conduct, I think we have a policy about exit interviews, so did we?
We conduct exit interviews with people. Some choose not to do an exit interview, some choose to. So the human resources director and I do conduct those exit interviews. Yes.
And I guess I was surprised when I heard that there was vacancy in the land use department. Do you think that just routinely letting us know about resignations is something that would be burdensome, or is that, would that be easy to do?
We could do that. It hasn't been my practice, but if that's what you want, that's what I can do. I don't usually, I usually let you know when there were department head vacancies. I have never informed the board of regular department employee vacancies, but if the board wants me to start doing that, we can absolutely do that.
I'd be interested.
Thoughts, anyone else?
Just to kind of know what kind of turnover and all we're having and.
If it's not a big deal for you to notify, I'm more than happy to.
And I had meant to ask this at our last meeting. When we appointed our chief as deputy chief, did that leave a vacancy in a position that he had been filling?
The deputy fire chief?
Yes.
No, he was a call firefighter.
Because he was just on a call.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Okay. So, under our new charter, that was just approved, I don't know if the board remembers that. So when there are vacancies on committees that I appointed prior, the way the charter reads now is I now nominate those people for appointment. I lost what the distinction is here, but that's the way the charter reads now. So, there are two vacancies on the commission of accessibility, and so I am nominating for appointment Thomas Pistorino and Lynn Pistorino to that committee based on a recommendation from the Commission on Accessibility, which is our policy, to receive recommendations. So I would ask the board to appoint those two individuals to the board, Commission on Accessibility, based on my nomination. I hope I said that right.
Can you fill us in, Mark? What is the process for, I mean, is that, that's not, is that a board that had vacancies?
Yep.
It's just an appointed board?
It's an appointed board. It used to be appointed by the town manager, now it is nominated for appointment by the town manager. So what I do, similar to what the board does, which you'll see on the next appointment, is we go to the board that has the vacancies, we ask them to interview, we advertise the vacancies, and then we ask for a recommendation. And then I either make the appointment, or now I will nominate them for appointment. So it's a similar process, we've been following all along.
Yep, and I apologize for my lack of knowledge.
Nope, that's fine.
How many people are on that committee?
There are seven, I believe.
Okay, and these were the only two vacancies?
These were two vacancies. Nope, those two vacancies.
Aren't there some stipulations? It's a state-required committee?
Those boards, there are certain positions that have to be on there, and those are filled by who needs to fill those positions. These are two at-large appointments.
Do you have any knowledge about particularly why these two were thought to be good candidates?
I, because they were interviewed, and Michelle Colet, as the accessibility access officer, came to me and said, these people have come forward, the committee interviewed them, and are recommending that they be appointed to the committee. Same procedure I follow with all my other appointments.
Right, now I just wondered if they had conveyed any particular reasoning. Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we.
Appoint.
Appoint. The Thomas Pistorino and Lynn Pistorino to the Commission on Accessibility, effective immediately.
Immediately, yep.
And is there a term?
These go through June 30, 2030. Ah, 20, 2020.
Effective immediately until June 30, 2020.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I have one more before we get to the continuation of the tax classification hearing. The Community Preservation Committee had a vacancy caused by the passing of one of its members. This is a Select Board appointment. There are two Select Board appointees on the Community Preservation Committee. This is a Select Board appointee that would take you through June 30th. What's the date on that one? 2021?
That's, I think what you said.
Did I put it in my report?
I think that's what you said in your report.
I should probably read my, yes, 2021. If I read my report, I'd know the answer. So the, there were two applicants, the CPC interviewed the two applicants, and they recommended that the board appoint Carolyn Perkins to the Community Preservation Committee with a term to expire June 30, 2021. I'd ask the board to consider making that appointment this evening. This is a board appointment.
I'm very happy to make that motion. Happy that Carolyn chose to put her self, put her name back in and serve on this committee again.
Is there a second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
Yep, okay. Yeah, we have some hands here. Marley and I saw you, and then Anna, if you want to, any microphone you like. Just in case there's questions. I was the second applicant.
Can I interrupt for one second? We had advertised and then voted to continue the tax classification hearing at 7:15, so I'd ask the board to open the continuation of the hearing at 7:15 to be completed after this discussion.
I move that we open the tax, reopen the tax classification hearing and continue the discussion on that at the completion of the current discussion. Second?
Perfect. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I can go with this discussion?
Yes, you are part of this discussion.
Okay. Forgive me, it may be lengthy, so I wrote it down so that way I wouldn't get lost with my little head cold going on here. It's my perspective in regards to this appointment, that much like the Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Parks Commission, Planning Board, they all have their designated members in which they designated for the Community Preservation Committee. This is a Select Board appointment. With that in mind, I respectfully ask the Select Board to consider what I'm sharing with you today when making your appointment to that Community Preservation Committee. The Community Preservation Committee, recently released in September 23, 2019, is based on two major documents in town. And I'm sure you all know this, but perhaps some of the people in the community don't, so please bear with me a little bit. In 2011, the Groton Master Plan, 2012, the Groton Open Space and Recreation Plan. I mention these documents because I'd like to reference those documents as to why I believe I would be an asset to this committee, the Community Preservation Committee. On page two, the introduction page of the 2011 Master Plan, it reads, "The Groton Master Plan is a plan to guide Groton's future by balanced economic opportunity and social equity with protecting the natural resources on which the town and its region depends." It continues to list all the different elements within our town that we would like to look after, basically, and that are included in our master plan. One of those areas is community facilities. It reads specifically, "Community facilities, an inventory of the community of Groton's municipal and school facilities, focusing on buildings, public grounds, non-transportation infrastructure, a review of size and organization of Groton's local government, and inter-local or regional affiliations, an assessment of existing in near terms and near needed terms, recommendations of addressed facilities, service demands on the town as it grows and exists, the population continues to change." I am that candidate that will bridge the gap that currently does exist between the Groton Municipal and the district. As you can see, the master plan clearly calls out an affiliation between our school and our municipal, and I think that that is a void right now. On page 17 of 2012 Open Space and Recreation Plan, in Groton, reading from this document, "The largest age cohort currently is school-aged children, five to 19 years old. Though larger is absolute members than it was in 2000, this age group is roughly the same proportion of the general population as it was a decade ago. Although the age group will decline as echo boom generation, our children's from the baby boom generation gets older, in-migration will probably keep its numbers relatively high because Groton is such an attractive place for families." This is actually a very, I don't think it's coincidental at all, the report that the district does to try and keep an eye on enrollment says the same thing. There will be an age out and then an in-migration, so the students will be replaced. "I am the best candidate to represent one of the largest cohorts in our town. I've already proven my ability to advocate for our youngest residents of Groton while also being mindful of the expense to taxpayers through finding efficiencies, requiring sustainable plans, and collaborating with not only our Groton municipal leaders, but also our Dunstable municipal leaders. It was expressed at the Community Preservation Committee that you can't just approve projects that you like. There's a process that you have to follow. I can only assume that there was a concern that a new member to this committee doesn't have the experience to understand how a project is approved for recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee to the town meeting. I will share with the Select Board what I shared with the Community Preservation Committee. While serving on the Groton Dunstable School Committee, our members serve on various committees. For those that have served on the committee, this is old news. Those that have not served on this committee, you work in many working groups, you work in very RFPs, you review different processes, and then you agree on a process, and you are to follow that process. That is how you come to a final decision, and some on very difficult decisions. As such, you're not permitted to approve a path forward that you like. You must approve a path forward through the process, regardless of your personal preference. Some of you may know or may not know just from the course of all of that hoopla when we were going through our audit. My husband is a local teamster, was 25, union for 30 years. Outsourcing custodian was the hardest decision I personally ever made. Never wanted to make that. That was not my personal choice. That was what the process yielded. And that was in the best interest of the community, the taxpayers, the student, and that's why that decision was made. So as you can see, I do know how to follow a process. Choosing between two different projects, I hope to come easy if given the opportunity between laying off 19 individuals. Lastly, the Community Preservation Committee expressed appreciation for having two valued candidates, which I believe they do. Ultimately, they voted to recommend the candidate to the Select Board that had previous experience of already serving on this committee. Makes sense, right? "The last time I was in this room and I put my name forward on a committee, it was expressed by Josh Deegan and Becky Pine that although I was well-qualified, a fresh pair of eyes was a strong determining factor for your decision to appoint another candidate. I'm asking both Josh and Becky to carry forward that same philosophy and allow me to utilize my unique sets of skills, knowledge, and that fresh pair of eyes that as a new member of the Community Preservation Committee that I do bring. Thank you for the consideration, and I appreciate the time, and I want to.
Thank you. Anna, you had your hand up as well?
I was one of the minority on the CPA, one of the minority. I had nominated Malina for the position, and very briefly, I just, I love both candidates. We are very fortunate to have such highly qualified people with their names forward. However, I did vote for Malina based upon the diversity that she would be bringing to the CPA committee. I think that it functions best when they are representatives of as wide and broad a constituency as possible. I have one regret from, as being a member of the board of selectmen, I have one regret on one of the appointments of new people. I had voted in favor of appointing somebody based upon institutional knowledge, which is what was proposed last week at our CPA meeting when Carolyn was nominated or brought, her name was put forward by a majority of the CPA. And my regret is that when I did, when I voted for that same reason, I did not look at the opportunities that we have from diverse and newer people coming forward to serve the town. So I just wanted to express that with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks with comments, questions? Okay. So typically, our process, I think, is to kind of turn toward the committee that has the vacancy and bring forward, you know, have them do the interviewing typically because they have a better feel for what the work is and what the needs are, and bring forward a recommendation. I don't, I'm just looking at the webpage for the CPC. And to me, this, I would say this feels a little bit different only in that there are not very many at-large members, unlike the FinCom, for example, where everybody is appointed by the Select Board. So it's, it's a different, a slightly different process. And again, my lack of knowledge, it's a seven-member committee, it looks like online anyway. Have the other members, and I don't know who would know this, Mark? Have the other, have the other members been on the committee for some time? You know, what is the current makeup?
Well, right now, the, you have one member, one, two, three of the members are original appointees who've been on the CPC as long as there's been a CPC. It's three of them.
Which is how long-ish?
Carolyn, how long has the CPC been in effect?
Two thousand years old.
Okay.
Yep, so three of the members have been on there all along, and there are three new members who have less experience. Carolyn, coming forward, is one of the original members of the CPC back to 2004. So that would give you four members with a lot of great experience and three members with not as much experience as the previous members. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thoughts? Yeah, Josh?
Carolyn, how long since you last served on the CPC?
Since I resigned from the planning board. No. Since I resigned from the planning board, because I was a planning board appointee. So I have had an interest in the CPC since I think it's a really valuable funding resource for a lot of projects that we have difficulty being funded through the budget. So I've been a strong advocate for a while. I enjoy being on it. I like working with people that are there. I enjoy reviewing the projects and working with people who come forward and helping them with their projects to get past when they meet their requirements. So I've been there for a while.
So I didn't expect that we'd be interviewing two people tonight, and not that I have a problem with that.
No, it's awkward.
Well, as awkward as it might be, it is what it is.
No, no. And, you know, I would say that there's certainly something to be said for diversity in having a group of people that represent a large variety of different areas in town, particularly areas that are looking for funding from the CPA.
So, Madam Chairman, or Chairman, can I ask a question of both candidates?
You may.
Thank you. So, at the time when the surrender and farm's debt is extinguished in two years, are you, Carolyn, an advocate for keeping the local match at 3%? Reducing it or eliminating it?
Well, I like that it's, I mean, we've been able to fund a lot of great projects over the years because we've had that 3%. 3% also benefits in that we get two, so we get two matches essentially. So we get the match that everybody gets at 1%, and then because we're at 3, we get a second round of match, which gives us additional money. So for me, yeah, because it allows us to get more money back from the state by keeping at 3%. So I do think it's valuable in that respect. And the other important thing is, we need to remember is that the state is just now really starting to recognize how valuable this CPA money is to individual towns in terms of being able to support historical projects, be able to support conservation projects, to be able to support recreational projects, and affordable housing. A lot, a lot of towns struggle with those issues and haven't been able to fund them. More and more towns are coming on to this because of that. So, yeah, I probably would support the 3%, but again, it's up to the town what they decide to do. They need to evaluate, we need to give people the information on how this has worked in the past and how valuable it is, but it's up to the town itself to decide.
Shall we ask Malina the same question? Do you want it?
Thank you.
Did you need me to ask it again, or did you hear it?
No, no, I've been thinking about that question for a long time. So the way that I see it is, first and foremost, the voters should ultimately decide. My personal perspective is, I think.
My personal perspective is, I think that information is extremely important because from serving, see, I have a, I have a cross-knowledge of many things here, which either gives you the brain circuit or just too much information sometimes. So, I've been on the municipal, I'm not sure what we were calling, working group of, our budget working group that cross-referenced our schools and our town. I know that we were looking at a five-hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deficit. I know that our community, our taxpayers were taxed seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for conservation CPC money with a match of only twenty percent this year. I think when our town agreed to do this, they were promised a hundred percent. Will it ever get there? I don't know. I, I personally, my personal opinion is, I don't, I really wish it would, because free money is, is great money, but the reality is, towns do realize that when they do participate, they do get free money. And there are some towns that not only cannot achieve the different projects that they would like to do, but they can achieve their operation budget. So I think that soon we're going to be discussing, do you want to maintain an operation budget? Do you want an override? Do you want to be able to do different projects? We have some very, very difficult decisions coming up over the next couple of years. And I think that another portion of that is, I think the school piece is, is a huge missing part that our taxpayers are not getting the benefit from. And the reason why I say that is there is little, little things that school committee members do know that unless you're in the trenches, you really don't have an idea. The ways that you want to get more state funding, for a perfect example, I'll give you two examples. We're not getting the state funding that the Conca-Kalau is getting. We're not actually, and why not? They make more money than us. Well, because they have more economically challenged students in their district. Acton-Boxborough, there are districts that are high-powered districts that just get more funding than we do. There's different reasons why they get more funding. So some of those, that, that's information and knowledge that just needs to be brought to the table and, and discussed. MSBA, awesome, they're going to reimburse us, reimbursement's up to forty-eight percent. They're not going to reimburse us for any school ground whatsoever. So there's little things like that. And if this is supposed to achieve programs that we otherwise could not afford, I think that's knowledge that should be on the table.
So what's your answer to my question?
It was about taxpayers.
No, the question is, would you support keeping the CPC at three percent, a lower number, or eliminating it?
It depends. If, if we had an override next year for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and the taxpayers had no problem with an override, I would then support three percent. If they have no interest in an override, then I would not. Because that would mean that they, we can't afford to do it anymore.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
The motion, just remind the Board, because that was a while ago, the motion on the table was to appoint Carolyn Perkins through June 30, 2021, to the CPC. That's the motion before you right now.
Right, and that, that is, that's a motion, right? That's not just that, we already?
It was made and seconded.
Yeah.
And Josh seconded it.
Sorry, it all blends together sometimes.
Yep.
Before I knew there was another candidate.
Well, you said it was for discussion purposes, so. So all in favor of appointing Carolyn Perkins to the CPC?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I am opposed.
As am I. Josh?
Yeah. I'd ask the Board to open the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
I'd ask the Board to continue the hearing. The assessors are here. I'd ask Jonathan and Garrett to come up to the table. In your packet, there was some information provided by the assessors, and I know Garrett will give us a very brief but exciting summary. Is that how you want me to say it, Jonathan?
The first thing I'd like to ask, and I have very froggy throat, so if you can't hear me, I'll try to speak up. Did everybody get in their packet something that looks like this?
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
It's the single page, because this is what I'm going to be walking you through.
Oh, was that, what's on this? It's the next page of this, this is page four.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
Is that the one you wanted, Garrett?
Yeah, that's the one. That's great. Okay, what this does, this page, is it basically walks you through Proposition Two and a Half as it applies to fiscal year 2020. And it walks you through the math of how the tax rate will be derived, and then we'll get into the shifting, how that's done mathematically. But the way, the way the tax rate, the way Prop Two and a Half works is that every year, the, did they have the levy, the sheet on there? Every year, the state does a levy limit, preliminary sheet, and what they do is they take, yeah, they take last year's levy, the levy, the levy limit for fiscal nineteen, and they'll take the last year's tax rate levy, which was fiscal nineteen, they'll back out the excluded debt for fiscal nineteen, and what they'll, what that will leave you with is the base for fiscal twenty. Now, that base incorporates the levy increase that was allowed last year under Prop Two and a Half and the new growth. So this is where the compounding comes in. So when you start the process for this year, if you could move it up just a little bit back to the top of the ladder. So for this year, we start out with thirty million, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-five, which is the fiscal 2019 levy limit minus the excluded debt from last year. And then, we, the next portion that's added in there is the levy increase. Now, the state will give you two, what the two-and-a-half percent calculation is. Actually, it was seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. When the budget was done and approved at the town meeting, the, the town chose not to use all of that. What they did was they increased the levy by four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five, which is about a one-point-five-nine percent increase over the base, as opposed to the two, two-and-a-half percent that the state calculates to give you as a given every year. So that, the net difference of that is two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars of excess levy capacity, which will be reported on the LA-5 and which I think goes into free cash or something like that. It, it doesn't disappear.
No, it, it, it's available for fiscal twenty-one.
It's available. And as I used to say in my first term on the Finance Committee, it's not cash and it's not free. But we won't get into that. So, that, that's the second step. The next exception to Prop Two and a Half, as far as allowing the town to collect more money, is new growth. Now, new growth is the value of all the new real and personal property that's being put on the tax roll for fiscal 2020 times the fiscal 2019 tax rate. So you take that valuation, which is what, about twenty-one millions?
Twenty-eight million.
Twenty-eight billion times last year's rate. And what, what they're allowing you to do is, and if you think about it, if we had, say, we had subdivisions coming online, the town has to support infrastructure. If there's new streets and, and they're, they're deeded over to the town, the town has to maintain them. So this is a way, when they put in Proposition Two and a Half, to allow the municipality, they get a little something incrementally built into their budgets every year. So they didn't, as the town expanded, as their tax base got bigger and they were obligated to support this new infrastructure, that they'd have some money and they weren't be falling behind constantly on a, from a budgetary standpoint. So now, when you add that in, you end up with the levy limit. And then, that, that comprises everything that's covered by Prop Two and a Half. The next addition to that is what they call above the levy limit, and this is where you get the accumulated debt service. Depending on what, what happens is the accountant does a schedule, it's called the DE1 schedule, it's part of the recap, and she lists the annual debt service for all of the outstanding bonds that were voted above the, to be, as an exception of Prop Two and a Half, to be added onto the levy. And I think, I have one in here, but if memory serves me correctly, there are ten outstanding bond issues right now, and they total, their annual debt service totals two million, seventy-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
That's both town excluded debt and school district excluded.
Right. It's, the biggest ones are the schools, the fire station, that sort of thing. And as the bonds mature and the debts paid off, those drop off that schedule. That's why it has to be updated every year, in addition to the fact that the actual bond payment every year will change, depending on how the bond is structured. So when you add all that together, you end up with the voted, in this case, the voted levy. And this, then, then you move into, okay, what's the tax rate going to be? Well, this is just basically like a grammar school division problem, as long as you have a single tax rate. What you do, you need to raise thirty-three million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, two-hundred dollars in taxes. Now, that's not your entire budget. That's not what, what's on the recap. The recap in the upper right-hand corner will give you what the levy is, and that, it'll be this figure, but it's not the total you have to raise and appropriate. The net difference of that is made up by, you know, excise taxes, intergovernmental transfers on the cherry sheet, that sort of thing. So there, so what you're doing is, is you're basically funding the town, I don't have the figures jumping up in me, but I think it's about seventy, is it like seventy percent roughly?
Yeah. Forty-two million is the total budget. Eleven million is coming from other sources, thirty-three million is coming from...
Right. So it's, it's, you're six, you're sixty, you know, mid-sixties to seventy percent dependent on the real and personal property tax. And that's about right for a town like Groton. So, so if you, if the town decides to have a single tax rate, it's just a matter of dividing the thirty-three million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, two-hundred into the total value of the taxable property, which is one billion, nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-six dollars, and that gives you a tax rate of seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand. Now, the, what you have to do tonight, if you've never, if you're not familiar with the process, and I see one gentleman is a new member, is the, the classification statute allows a municipality to vote to shift some of the tax burden from the residential classes. It's residential and open space, but we don't have an open space tax rate here, we use the residential rate, over to the commercial, industrial, and personal property side. And in order, you, you're, you're allowed to, and this is where it gets a little tricky, you're allowed to shift an amount of the residential levy, which would be thirty-one million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, two dollars, off of that thirty-one, seven-eighty-one, two dollars, over to the commercial, industrial, and personal property. An amount of money that would increase the tax rate for the commercial, industrial, and personal property to fifty percent of what it, to a hundred-and-fifty percent of what it would have been if you didn't classify. Now, if you had a tax base that was fifty percent residential and fifty percent commercial, you'd have a one-to-one dollar transfer. But you have a tax base in Groton, which is ninety-four percent residential, and a non-residential tax base, which is about five-point-seven-five percent non-residential. So that means that for every dollar you shift in taxes off of the residential, because of that ratio, you're probably shifting ten or fifteen dollars over onto the other side. And you'll very quickly hit that one-fifty, and you'll notice, if you look at the chart that I gave you, and that's, yeah, that, and then there's one that does it in ten percent increments. What, what you'll notice is, is that, and I'll just go through the ten percent steps, if you were to decide to shift over ten percent and a hundred, classify at a hundred-and-ten, the residential portion of the levy would go from ninety-four point-two-four percent to ninety-three point-six-six. So you've gone down about a half a percent, but you've already raised the taxes on the commercial ten percent. And as you go forward at, at one-point-two shift, so the tax rate, in this case, it would be seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents, down from the seventeen dollars and thirty-eight, but the commercial, industrial, personal would go up to nineteen point-one-two. If you went to one-twenty, you'd go down to seventeen point-one-seven, and you'll go up to twenty dollars and eighty-six, and you just keep going if you go down that sheet there, you know, and so on and so forth. When you get to one-fifty, the residential rate's down to sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents, but the commercial rate's up to twenty-six dollars and seven cents. So it's fifty percent higher than what it would have been, and you real, you haven't really made that much of a dent into the residential share. So then it becomes basically a, I don't know, it's sort of like a, if you're Boston, you don't care because you have such a huge commercial tax base, and you have businesses which would shift that onto their customers or their renters or whatever. But if you're in a demographic, which is essentially made up of small businesses, who in addition to paying real estate taxes, also pay personal property taxes.
So Garrett, if you look at this, this section up here, if you were to do the hundred-and-fifty percent switch, which is the maximum allowed?
Right, that's the hundred.
You would lower the average residential tax bill by two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, but you would increase the average commercial tax bill by five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty.
Right, right. And that's where that ratio comes in. And if, like I said, if theoretically half of Groton's tax base was residential and half of it commercial, there would be an equal, there would be an equal decrease and an equal shift over, and it wouldn't be that dramatic. So, so the question is, and this is, what, what, you're basically being put in as a position, when Prop Two and a Half came in, prior to Prop Two and a Half, there were large municipalities like Boston, Cambridge, places like that, they hadn't done a revale since World War I. And Prop Two and a Half was a, it was a result of a Supreme Judicial Court case where people in the suburbs were, you know, they were, their, their education funding was dependent on the equalized assessment valuation of the town. And since Boston hadn't done a revale since World War I, they were actually getting more, taking advantage and getting more money than they would have gotten than if they had periodically upgraded their assessments. So what happened historically was that you had sort of bad, they did, you, you couldn't have classification, that was unconstitutional, they had to amend the state constitution to allow for this, but what basically what happened is you had assessors that were implementing something like this, because they wouldn't reassess the residential, and as the new commercial property was put on, they'd do it at a hundred percent. So you had this huge disparity in the tax burden between the residential and the commercial property owners, and it, it had, it all came crashing to a halt in 1980. So since having a split rate or having the kind of inequity, which was, it, you would have had a complete reversal of the fifty years of inequity in one year if they didn't come up with a classification statute, make it constitutional. That's where they came up with this formula, and that's why they have a vote every year. So what they did was they simply took a bunch of bad assessing practices and turned it into a way, a political decision. it into a way, a political decision.
So would I, I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna say, so what we're looking to do here is to decide whether we're gonna retain that one rate or whether...
Right, you're looking to whether you want to shift any of the burden off of the residential onto the commercial, industrial, personal property, and I guess the question, the decision you have to make is, if we do this, if you decide to do that, are you really benefiting the residential property owners that much? It's kind of a de minimis benefit, and at the same time, you're really, because of the, because of the small percentage that the non-residential represents of the whole, you're going to have a huge increase in the burden on the non-residential property.
So based, based on that, board, I would recommend that the board tonight adopt a residential factor of one, which would set a single tax rate of seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents, and an unexpendated tax capacity of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. I'd ask that to be the board's motion, if you're so inclined.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And may I just comment, I don't see any value at all in, people in this town are constantly talking about, we need more commercial property, well, they're not gonna come if we increase their taxes.
No.
Before we go, I have one question, though. So the excluded debt portion of just over two million dollars.
Right.
Is there a typical ratio of excluded debt to levy limit for a community?
Whatever the community, no. Yeah, there's a levy, there's a levy ceiling, if, let me see, let me see if I have that.
Does excluded debt factor into the levy ceiling?
I...
Excluded debt is outside the levy ceiling.
It's outside the levy limit, but you can't, you can't, I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, this is one of those things I had to learn about thirty years ago for an exam, but Prop two and a half set the maximum tax rate you could have.
Twenty-five dollars.
At twenty-five dollars per thousand. So there's a levy, there's a levy ceiling, which I don't think you're anywhere near.
With fourteen million dollars under the levy ceiling.
Right, but if you, if you actually, if you hit that ceiling...
You're done.
You're done. You're done, and it almost happened to Boston about fifteen years ago.
Josh, to answer your question, it depends on the communities, what the community wants to pay on top of the regular tax levy.
Right.
So there is no standard, it's what you're, you know, it's what your ability to pay.
But there is an absolute statutory limit.
Exceed the levy limit.
You can't exceed a tax rate of twenty-five dollars a thousand.
Right, if you get above that, you have to lower your budget, or you won't get your tax rate up.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to use a factor of one, and keep both rates at seventeen thirty-eight, or set both rates at seventeen thirty-eight. All in favor?
Aye. There's a form here, just have to sign your names on this one.
May I ask, they sign that now, so I can take it in?
Yeah, don't worry, they're gonna sign it right now.
I'm not gonna be the assessor that doesn't get the tax bills out by January first, that's not gonna be me.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Is there anything going on, Jonathan, are you hearing anything about communities kind of pushing back on Prop two and a half, or anything?
There's always talk at, you know, because I attend...
Or adjusting the number, or...
Yeah, I mean...
I don't think I've ever heard of anybody having an underwrite, that's always the unicorn, you sort of...
There was one town, Belmont?
Belmont?
No, it was Southborough, had an underwrite.
Maybe that's what it was.
Of over one point five million dollars, and they voted it in. When all that development went in along I-290 and...
Yeah.
And when the Wegmans and all that stuff went in down that area and everything, they were swimming in money.
Right.
So there's not really any discussion of making it Prop two and three quarters or something?
No, no, there, I mean, I would, it would literally take an act of Congress to, yeah. And it took two years for us to get the charter ratified, so...
Good point, yeah, all right.
Next on the agenda is, that's how we do it for the board to do your annual licenses. I wanna thank Becky for going through this with a fine-tooth comb today. There were two licenses that we didn't bring forward tonight that we will bring next week. One is the common vic license for the station house, and the second is a common vic license for the temple, Hindu temple, which we will bring next week. But as is our practice, I'd like to read these into the record page by page and have the board vote them, if that's okay with you?
Yep.
So we're recommending that Omaha Realty, doing business as Boston Road Market, Bayesh Patel, manager, located eight-seventy-one Boston Road for all alcohol and a common vic license, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, eight to one, Sunday ten to eleven. Groton Market, John Madigan, manager, located two-thirty-five Main Street, package store, all alcohol, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, nine to nine, Sunday eleven to six, license to expire December thirty-first. Dennis and Estelle Marchand, doing business as Cravens Package Store, Dennis Marchand, manager, located seven-seven Boston Road for package store, all alcohol license, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, eight to eleven, Sunday ten to eleven. Filo's Cucina, doing business as Filo's Cucina, Oswald Filo, manager, located two-thirty-five Main Street for CBL Anacarion, license, hours of operation Monday to Thursday, eleven to eight, Friday, Saturday, eleven to nine, Sunday four to eight. Main House Inc., Chin Wang Hung, manager, located four-ninety-five Main Street, Unit three C for common vic license, hours of operation Sunday to Saturday, eleven to ten. And FG Catalano Enterprises, doing business Duncan Donuts, Groton Center, Steve Catalano, owner, located at one-thirty-three Main Street for a common victual license, hours of operation six to six, Sunday six to six, Friday, Wednesday, six to seven. I'd ask the board to approve those licenses as presented.
Hold on, wait a minute, that last one, are they not open Mondays and Tuesdays? Hours of operation Sunday, six AM to six PM, and then Friday to Wednesday, which is a strange...
So I, because they're, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
What about Thursday?
So should you say Friday to Thursday?
Well, I think it should say Monday to Saturday.
Why don't you just approve it Sunday to Saturday from six AM to seven PM?
You could do that, too.
Because that encompasses Sundays.
You could do that.
Could we just do that?
Please do.
Would you like to make a motion?
Good catch.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion to change that?
Please, just approve it as presented.
We'll just approve it as presented and discussed.
Amend.
Approve as, I'm presenting it as Monday through, Sunday through Saturday, six to seven. Approve him as presented, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, but it's, right now, it's got six to six hours.
We're gonna do six to seven, we give them more, they can open when they want to.
Okay.
Is there a second to my motion to approve it?
Second.
All righty, very good. All in favor?
Aye. Next page, Courtney Donuts LLC, doing business Duncan Donuts, Groton Forge, Steve Catalano, owner, located three Forge Village, common victual license, hours of operation daily six to eight. Courtney's Donuts LLC, doing business Duncan Donuts, Groton Havens, Steve Catalano, owner, located three-eighteen Main Street, hours of operation daily six to seven. Groton Towing Inc., Robert Olson, manager, located four-fifty-five Main Street for a class-two license, hours of operation Monday through Friday, eight to six, twenty-four seven for towing. Jibbit Hill Grill LLC, doing business as Jibbit Hill Grill Restaurant in the barn at Jibbit Hill Function Hall. Martha Lucio, manager, located sixty-one Lowell Street. Two all-alcohol licenses, two common victual license, hours of operations for both Monday through Sunday, Monday through Sunday, eleven to one. Groton Medical Wellness Spa LLC, doing business as Evans Energy Wellness Cafe, Gene Norton, Evans, manager, located four-ninety-three Main Street for a CBL, hours of operations Monday to Thursday, eight to six, Friday, eight to five, Saturday, ten to three. Seven Hills Pediatric Center, Holly Jarrett, manager, located twenty-two Hillside, common victual license, twenty-four hour operation. Mas Inc., doing business as Exstapa Grill and Cantina, Eric Bramble, a manager, located seven-sixty-five Boston Road for a restaurant, all alcohol, CBL, hours of operation Sunday to Thursday, eleven to ten, Friday and Saturday, eleven to eleven. Shaw's Supermarket Inc., doing business as Shaw's Supermarket, number seven-six-two-seven, Mike Riccardi, manager, located seven-sixty-eight Boston Road for a CBL, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, seven to ten, Sunday, seven to nine. Blackbird Cafe Inc., doing business as Blackbird Cafe, Katie Kenny, manager, located at four-ninety-one Main Street for common victual license, hours of operation daily six to four. Country Butcher and Deli Inc., Kenneth DeMers, manager, located sixty-eight Boston Road for a CBL, hours of operation Monday through Wednesday, ten to six, Thursday through Friday, ten to seven, Saturday, ten to five. I'd ask the board to authorize and approve those as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a question.
Yep.
The one that's for Groton Towing, and it says class-two, that has nothing to do with food, is that...
No, that class-two is to, they sell vehicles as well.
Okay, and then they get lumped in with the food?
Well, it's just, she has the licenses, that's why I specifically say what the license is.
I see, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna go one out of all of here, and then I'll do the rest. AL Prime Energy Market, Chekov Badu, manager, located six-nineteen Boston Road for common victual license, hours of operation Monday through Saturday, five to ten, Sunday, six to nine. I'd ask the board to approve that license.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
River Court Residences, Richard Kendall, manager, located eight West Main Street for a CBL, hours of operation twenty-four seven. The Natural Market, doing business at The Natural Market, Joan Rayden, manager, located one-forty-eight Main Street for a CBL, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, nine-thirty to six-thirty, Sunday, eleven to five. Energy North Incorporated, doing business as Havens, thirty-one twenty, Ruth Fitcher, manager, located three-eighteen Main Street for a CBL, hours of operation Sunday to Saturday, six to ten. One-twenty-eight Main Street LLC, doing business at The Groton Inn and Forge and Vine, Patricia Ann Tompkins, manager, located at one-twenty-eight Main Street. Two general all-alcoholic, all-alcohol licenses, two CBL licenses, two entertainment licenses, and two Sunday entertainment licenses, hours of operation Monday through Saturday, eight to one, Sunday, ten to one. The GBH Pub LLC, doing business at The Groton Public House Pub in Edery, Christopher Frautham and Manager, located ninety-four Lover's Lane. General on-premise all-alcohol, two of those, and two CBL license, hours of operations daily, ten AM to one AM. And finally, the Station House LLC, doing business at the Station House, Andrew McElroy, manager, located twenty, Station Ave. General on-premise all-alcohol and CBL, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, eight to twelve, Sunday, ten to twelve. I'd ask the board to approve those as presented.
So moved. I have one.
Go ahead.
Can you just clarify, the Public House has two because...
They do the function hall as well.
At the country club. I get it, okay.
Board, board policy has been, and will continue to be, two separate buildings, two separate licenses.
So you added in the CBL for Station House or the alcohol, whichever one wasn't there earlier?
Correct.
But what did you say about the temple?
We're gonna come in with a CBL for them next week, they're filling out their paperwork this week. Becky brought that to my attention from last year, we didn't receive any application, so once Becky contacted me, we contacted the Board of Health, and they in fact give them a food services permit, they sell food on Thursdays?
Thursdays, Saturdays.
Thursdays, Saturdays, and Sundays, they serve food, and they use the money to offset costs, so since they are licensed by the Board of Health, you need to issue a CBL to them, so they're being...
All right, so all in favor of these as presented?
Aye.
Question?
Please.
On a couple others. Bruno's?
The Westmore things, so we're missing.
Okay, we're still missing, so...
Yep, we'll bring those next, we were gonna bring them on the twenty-third, but we'll bring them next week, yeah. Bruno's needs a CBL.
Okay.
Johnson's?
Johnson's needs a CBL. Anacarion.
No, they have a, okay.
Anacarion.
But I have a question.
Groton House of Pizza, too.
They need one, and they also have an entertainment license.
Missing Salt and Light, also, missing Dolce and Gabbana.
I'm glad you guys all know the licenses you have.
They have like six or seven.
Is there a cafeteria at Neb's or Deluxe?
There's not anymore.
No, they got rid of that last year, Josh, yes.
John?
Okay, some of these say all-alcohol restaurant license, then one will say restaurant, all alcohol, then another one will say general on-purpose, all alcohol.
On-premise.
Then another one will say, okay, there's several with the general, are those three different type licenses?
They're locked on, it's just, I try to make it consistent in the way I do it, but as they get added year after year.
Yeah, we just have different names for the same thing.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to understand.
You are correct.
Good.
So I'm in the process of developing the town's fiscal year twenty-one capital plan as required by the charter. As I told the board, the requests exceed the available funds in the town capital stabilization fund, so in order to address these, and trying to shrink some four or five hundred thousand dollars worth of reductions, one of the things that we were looking at within the budget is how to finance the fire truck that was approved last year, so it was in last year's capital plan, and we had decided to do it with a five-year statehouse note. So that would have required a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty-five thousand a year over the next four years out of the capital stabilization fund. We had expired some debt within the general operating budget, which would allow us to permanently finance the fire truck and finance five hundred and eight thousand, the original truck was five, six hundred and fifty thousand. We paid off a hundred and forty thousand of interest and principal, so that left a balance of five hundred and eight thousand dollars that we would permanently finance with the bond issue when we go out in the spring with the DPW garage in the library roof. That would take the hundred and forty out of the capital plan and transfer thirty-five thousand into the operating budget, which would be, which would fill in some of the excluded, some of the debt within the budget that we did last year, and level the debt within the operating budget at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is where we had it last year, so there would be no change within the operating budget, and it would free up a hundred and forty thousand in the capital plan. In order to put that into a twenty-year bond, I need this board to vote that the useful life of the truck is at least twenty years. So I'm asking the board tonight to vote that the truck that we agreed to buy last year has a useful life of at least twenty years. Josh asked a very important question to me this morning, and that was, what's the interest difference by doing it that way? And it's about sixty-five, depending on the interest rate, anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five thousand, depending on what the final interest rate is when we go out to permanently finance the truck. So I'm trying to be creative in our finances, and I think this is a legitimate way to do that, as the, our average life of the fire trucks, when we met with them, John, you were with us when we met with the fire chief, is anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years on our trucks. So based on that, I would ask you to make that vote tonight, please.
I move that we declare the useful life of the new fire truck, I wish I had more detail on exactly what truck that is, but the new fire truck...
It's the combined pump, per...
...authorized, that's two thousand nineteen Springtown meeting, be approved, be declared.
Has a useful life of greater than twenty years.
Right.
Is there a second?
I have some more questions before I understand this well enough.
I will second it for discussion purposes, it sounds like there are gonna be a lot of questions. Becky, go ahead.
So first of all, is this the million-dollar truck?
No, this was the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck. We already bonded the million-dollar truck for twenty years.
Okay, so my math, I figured this out, you said five years, a hundred and forty thousand, that comes out to seven hundred thousand, but twenty years, a twenty-eight thousand only comes out to five hundred and sixty thousand, what?
We already paid...
We already paid a hundred and forty last year, it's only four years at a hundred and forty.
So it's only four years left?
Yep.
Okay, and that comes out to five hundred and sixty then, the same amount?
It's, no, it's, it's, I looked at the debt schedule, it was sixty-five thousand dollars more over twenty years. I may have given you the one number, Becky, with the twenty-eight or thirty thousand dollars a year.
So on the one hand, it sounds like a good and creative solution, on the other hand, what does it mean for us over time that we add this into long-term debt? It, does that squeeze out a couple of years down the road when we are faced with some new long-term debt that we need to take on?
It's a great question. Our plan had always been to keep around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget, operating budget for debt service. Right now, the tax levy, our in, in-levy debt service is three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand of that is in-levy tax, tax dollars. The remaining is our pay-as-you-go bond program, in which we utilize free cash to pay down the, was it the radio project? Patricia, the radio project, to pay down the radio project. So we dropped about thirty-five thousand dollars in, in-levy debt this year, something got paid off, which freed up thirty-five thousand, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna slide this in it to keep us at around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars within the levy, and free up a hundred and forty thousand dollars in our capital plan, because I need to get the capital plan from nine hundred down to five hundred, and this was a way to free up a hundred and forty thousand of that.
But that doesn't, I don't think answered the question of what happens in three years, or whenever it is that we're gonna have this huge debt for schools, number one.
That's gonna be excluded debt, there's no way that's gonna get done in the operating budget. That's, that's a debt service payment of a million dollars a year, so there's no way we're gonna do that within the levy. That's, that's a debt service payment of a million dollars a year, so there's no way we're gonna do that within the levy.
Okay. Josh?
Yeah, I called Mark earlier this morning to discuss this, and I've been thinking about this one all day. And if my memory serves me correctly, I was the mover of this motion at town meeting for the financing of this.
You most likely were.
And my explanation to the town meeting voters who approved this was that we had a plan that said in five, over five years, we were gonna pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year and keep it within debt. Obviously, I think there was some language within the wording of the motion that allowed the board to select them to change that, should we so vote to do so.
It authorized you to borrow the money. It did not authorize the manner in which you borrowed.
No, but the way it was...
The way you explained it, absolutely.
But I did explain it to the taxpayers that we were gonna do this within, um, tax levy capacity.
And we are still...
And the plan was, and we did one year to do it. So I understand why you wanna do this. And if I was in your position, I'd be advocating to do this as well, given nine hundred thousand dollars in requests and the amount of money that was there. However, I find it not on your behalf, but at least on my behalf, cause I'm the way, the one who presented this, somewhat disingenuous to the taxpayers that if I was to vote in favor of what you propose, um, it's a little double speak. And I've heard enough double speak coming out of the town, uh, not town, but state and federal government, so I'm not gonna support this.
Let me just gonna keep going on the whole before. Aren't you have questions, John?
I'm trying to settle it myself.
Yeah. Um, I just had a question and now it's gone.
I'm sorry.
Uh, no, that's okay. I, I remember now. Um, so this is, this, this helps to address a piece of the potential delta between expenses and revenues as we move forward. Um, but it's only part of it, right? I mean, we'll...
There's another, there's, like I said, I had nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of requests and five hundred thousand to spend. This helps me...
Yes.
Bring it down.
Um, so for me, I would be more comfortable kind of seeing a, a whole proposal all at once and talking about priorities and options and alternatives rather than doing this piecemeal. Is there a, a timing push to do this now, or what is...
Well, I need to present to you a balanced budget by December thirty-first, and I need to present to you a balanced capital budget by December thirty-first. And in order to do that, I need to know whether or not I can shift the debt burden from one budget to another by spreading it out over twenty years versus four years. So I guess the urgency is I, if I'm gonna give you that budget on December thirty-first, I need you to take the vote now. If, if I'm gonna do that. If you vote no, then I'm gonna have to go back and reevaluate the capital plan.
But it, so if we were to vote no tonight...
Then I'm gonna have to raise the hundred and forty thousand.
Understood, but we could bring this back to the table then in January or February for discussion, correct?
Well, because I would have shifted the entire capital budget by then.
Right, but if, if we determine that, that this is a better alternative than whatever else is presented to us, we can do that at that point. If we approve this tonight, do you kind of pull the trigger on all of this?
I balance, absolutely.
Or do you just have permission to do so, but you haven't actually...
Well, I tell you...
Do you understand what I'm asking?
If, you say exactly what you're asking. It's a good question. If you authorize and you vote tonight that the useful life of the fire truck is twenty years or greater, it will give us the opportunity to, to bond it in February.
Right.
And then I'll give you a, a full budget presentation. You'll see the capital plan, which by the way, the capital plan committee's meeting Wednesday night to, to review the proposed plan as well. It'll give you the opportunity in February to do that. You can decide, what, basically what you're doing is you give me a, a bunch of options right now. You see the whole plan, and you can say, listen, I don't like it. Go back to the statehouse note, don't do it, and it doesn't change anything. But you give me a lot of flexibility tonight if you give me that vote, and I would really appreciate you giving me that flexibility. I guess it's my...
But you're not gonna lock in something?
Can't, not until February. Absolutely.
Okay.
But, but once you send a train going down the tracks, the momentum takes a lot of energy to stop. And I want a new car right now, and my wife wants a new car right now. However, we can't afford a new car right now. And this town has spent so much money on so many projects, and we have so many things that are looming in front of us that I would rather have Mark in the position of having to make some tough decisions on the capital plan rather than have the flexibility to say yes. And I'm extremely uncomfortable with the debt burden that we're undertaking here as a community. And when you tell the taxpayers and the voters at town meeting one thing, and then you go change the equation to allow flexibility for additional spending in order to meet the needs to make the department heads and the community happier by saying yes rather than no, um, it ends up putting the burden on the taxpayers.
There is no tax increase with this.
At the end of the day, this is why we are elected, and this is when sometimes we have to give some pushback to the town manager for his initiatives. And not that I don't think this is creative, and not that I don't think it's a good idea, and not that I don't think it gives you flexibility, but that doesn't mean I have to support it, and I can't, so I'm sorry. I won't.
Understood. I don't, listen, Josh, you have, you gotta do what you gotta do. I made a proposal.
Okay, I understand.
Becky?
Uh, so, I think I was sort of in the same page as where Allison is. So if, if we vote tonight to just say, to declare that the useful life of this fire truck will, truck will be twenty years or more, that gives you the flexibility to consider this option, but we might not agree with what you present to us later.
Absolutely correct.
We might say no, we still want this under the five year. And, and the difference over that, that period of time is that we will end up paying out sixty-five to eighty-five thousand dollars more.
More in interest.
Money and interest over the long term of the debt. Um, I, I guess I, the, my biggest problem is that not having seen that capital plan, I have no idea what I'm weighing this against. And so I wanna, I'm, I'm, I am willing to say that the useful life of the fire truck will be twenty years, but I wanna see the whole capital plan before we're ju- you know, making the decision of which of these alternatives to go on.
Which is, which is fine. Uh, you will see the plan, you'll see how I, how I present it to you, and the board can tell me at that point, no, I want you to cut it back, and I want you to pay for it out of the statehouse note program over four years. And that will affect the next four-year capital plans, um, the capital plan over the next four years, because it'll be a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year out of that five hundred each.
But also, isn't there, um, assuming that we do get into the green communities program? Isn't there some of what we are anticipating paying for that's gonna get paid by that program?
There are several things, and John can tell you, and Bud can tell you, cause we, we, we met with the department heads. There are several things in the capital plan years down the line that will be eligible for green community grant. There's a, there's a, a program at the library that they're looking to do some, uh, lighting improvements. Changing out their lighting, which will be eligible. There's some furnace HVAC work at the police station that would be eligible. None of that is in fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one's plan. It's all down, it's all down the road. But yes, Becky, you're right, right on, right on target with that. Yes.
So will, if we get into the program, we will actually be spending money, we'll be doing things that we're not...
No, it's in the plan, but instead of paying for it out of the capital stabilization fund, we pay for it out of the grant.
Right, but we'll be doing things this year with that first...
None of those items are in this year's capital plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we'll be doing things that we're not already planning to do. I get it.
So to me, this kind of comes down to if we determine now that the fire truck is gonna last us for more than twenty years, that gives you permission to potentially do this.
Correct.
Which means when we see the budget.
Yep.
You will have identified fewer dollars worth of, of cuts than if we don't approve this now.
In the ca- yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Bud had his hand up.
I would support the twenty years because the truck does last twenty years, so fact number one is the fire trucks last more than twenty years. So, we ought to put what it is to begin with. And secondly, I think by doing that, um, Josh was probably right, or whoever said it, that we will look at other options. And I think it's important this year that we do look at a, a lot of options, because one, um, Josh asked for a budget that said, what does it roll to? It's gonna be a big number. And then we said, with the select board, get it to zero with a, hopefully to help with the school, otherwise I don't think we can get there, but so soon the school does help us. Um, and to get from, there'll still be a gap, and so to get from that gap to zero, we're gonna have to do things that probably we, we didn't, not probably, we didn't do before. And the question is, how do we get there? My expectation is you have, here's where we work with the way the number rolls, and here's sharing the school, and then here's things that we need to do, or we can do, or we don't wanna do, but we should do, that's gonna get us to zero. And this would probably, based on what Mark just said, might be one of them. But without doing this, we can always then say, we don't agree with that, we don't agree with that, we don't agree with that. And cut that, cut that, cut that. That, that probably are, or that might happen, that might not happen. But if we don't, if we don't look at all the options, just like looking at the revenue opportunities and other options, if we don't look at everything, we won't have a full plate to decide what we wanna do. And I, I agree with the fact that the town may have been set, been told something, uh, they were told something. But we also told the town that we had a committee we put together, and we're gonna look at a lot of things because we have a big problem, and the only way we're gonna get this big problem solved is start thinking together as a school and a town and look at everything from top to bottom, revenue to everything. So, like I said, one, the truck is twenty years plus a real asset. And two, I think we need to throw this in there because we need to look at all the opportunities to get back to zero without an override. And we still have, like Becky said, the opportunity again, just to cut everything if we don't agree with it.
But to me, it, it feels like we're better off to look at all the options as a whole, rather than saying, oh, let's look at this one, and then either, we, we have to remember, and we have to remember to present to the public that we authorize this, but we might or might not do it.
Okay. Well, again, I'm not putting the, I don't, I'm not putting the budget together, but if you have a nine hundred, whatever the number is, problem, whatever, it was a big number.
Yeah.
If you have that problem, they're gonna be, how do you get to zero? And the answer is, this could be one. If, if, if in fact the select board and the FinCom says, I don't like that option, what are you gonna do about that? Then it's gonna have to be something else done. And the option is, in capital, it's like, there's no cars, there's no trucks, there's no something. Because that's all, that's the only thing this is being used for. It happens to be in the operating budget. The other option is you cut something else out of the operating budget to be able to fund this capital item in the operating budget. So, I agree with you, Allison. The question is, how many iterations do you wanna go before you say, what's the other option behind? Which you could ask that question. If we don't do this, if Mark gives a list, to say, if we pick one of these and say we don't want it, what's your backup position on that?
But that's, I feel like that's what we're gaining. If, if we don't vote to ex- to declare the life of the truck as longer than twenty years now, that's what we're getting. We're getting more, we're reducing the iterations because we're getting more information in the initial budget presentation.
But then you gotta remember, you're gonna still have that, if you decide not to do that, and you wanna say, okay, I agree with the truck's twenty years, let's put it in for twenty years, cause three thousand dollars a year in interest extra is not a big deal. It is a big deal, but it's not a big deal, um, that you ought to, you still need to have that option. That's all I'm saying. You still need to have that option, because it may come down to doing that option.
Yep. John Geiger?
I'm wondering, uh, if we can phrase the motion such that, um, the board would be open to considering doing this if it turns out to be the best way to go. In other words, we wouldn't go through a, a big harangue later if it is decided by a combination of the town manager and the finance committee and the board that that's the smartest thing for us to do. As opposed to just declaring tonight, it's, it's twenty years before we know whether we really need to make that declaration.
But doesn't it, at that point, if we determine we do wanna go forward with this in, in a month or two, or a month and a half, doesn't it at that point, it's the same vote that we're making now?
Well, one is simply declaring that we would go along with, with making the declaration if it's, turns out that that's the best way to go. So it's just declaring that we're not opposed to it.
Right.
As a possibility. And I don't know if that helps.
No, it helps. But just to, just to answer Allison's question, um, you know, you have an engine five refurbishment, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in this year's budget. I can promise you that's gonna be pushed off a year. Can't afford to, can't afford to do that within the plan. We've also, we're also putting off and recalculating out the way we do our intermediate trucks. We push that off a, a year and recalibrate it out. That's gonna be done.
Right, but this is all exactly what I, for me anyway, that I would wanna see
Yep.
in writing, in a packet, in advance. I mean, I...
But I'm still developing the plan, and until I get this vote, I can't give you the final plan. It's hard.
Well, you can't. It isn't the final plan that you're giving.
It's the proposed plan.
It's your best proposal.
Correct.
On, on December thirty-first.
Correct.
So, do you actually need a vote?
John, actually, have a quick...
I just, I, Josh helped me when he said he couldn't afford the car, and he and his wife, we already bought the car. The car's ours. We're trying to figure out how to pay for it. I wanna know, what's disingenuous about it? I know you made the motion. If, if it's gonna benefit us overall to, for his plan to get the budget where we need it. I, I, when he said I bought the car, I'm thinking of my budget, my house. I prioritize things. And if I see a big expenditure, I just bought a truck, I can't afford it. Now I have to figure out how to pay it. That's kinda what we did. We, we're not being disingenuous. I, I know what you're saying, and I, I get it, and I get the whole part too. But I have to look at everything by pieces, and the pieces are gonna add up at the end. And when we put the pieces together, that's where the plan is coming in. So I, 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 I'm looking at it the way I do my own budget. Uh, I, I owe too much here, I gotta move some money here, I gotta get rid of this here, I can't afford to do that here. We can't, I can't look at it. It is, it is at a whole, it's a whole, but it's pieces of, that make the whole. I'm just saying, we bought it. If it helps bring the budget in line.
Well, except I think the taxpayers, you know, you get a dozen of them in here, they might have a dozen different ideas about what we should do. It was, I, I really take Josh's point to heart that we did say we're gonna bond this to our five-year period.
I remember.
And to now decide to change, we may think that in the, looking at the whole picture, it makes sense to do that, but it does add a cost over years, and it may make, it seems to me, in my mind, it may make a few years down the road, we've got even more debt coming on, and it may make that harder. Although if this is, you're saying this is within the levy limit.
It's within the levy.
It, you know, it may go unnoticed, and maybe everybody would agree, we, this was the right thing to do. My question at this point is, do you really need a vote tonight? I think you've got a sense from us that we might support, you know, that the twenty-year life of the, of the fire truck is sort of a no-brainer, that yes, we agree with that. We might support the shift in the, in the debt, depending on what we see for the bigger picture.
Okay, that's an excellent point. We can't go out and bond the truck for twenty years without this vote. This, it's the law. It require, it requires you to say that the useful life of a fire truck is twenty years, which...
Right.
It is, but that's neither here nor there. Um, but what I can do is I can come and propose to you my capital budget in consultation with the capital planning committee, who's gonna give me their advice. Um, I can give you my budget, and I can say, by the way, within this, I'm shifting a cost here. You can decide at that point to vote the useful life. You just have to do it before February. I was just trying to button things up and make things more presentable when I give you my budget on December thirty-first, but I'm gonna give you my proposed budget on December thirty-first, which will have me pulling the capital, which will have me now, and give you advance notice, of pulling that fire truck out of the statehouse note program and permanently financing it in February. You can decide at that point if you wanna do it or not.
Can you, when you deliver the budget, that, that's your intention on what you would like to do?
That's what I'm going to do, yeah.
I, I understand that. But be prepared to show us the scenario in the event that we don't support that, as to how you will deal with the difference between having to pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, next year and having to pay, what'd you say, twenty-eight thousand? If you, if you bond it?
Thirty, thirty or thirty-five, I can't remember exactly.
What I'm saying is, there's a delta of a hundred and ten thousand dollar difference, correct?
No, because it's two different plans.
Okay.
It's two different budgets, two different scenarios. What it'll do is it'll shift the capital budget. I will have to put this back into the capital budget, take a hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the capital stabilization fund and eliminate a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of other requests.
How much money's in the stabilization fund?
There's five, there's six hundred and something thousand in there, but we're only gonna spend five hundred thousand, because we like to leave a hundred and some odd... because we like to leave a hundred and somewhat thousand in there, a hundred and eight thousand. I think there's a hundred and eight which would be left after this appropriation of five hundred, which we keep as for emergencies that may come up.
In the stabilization.
Capital stabilization.
How much is in the stabilization fund?
One point two something. How much? One point six? Regular stabilization. Two point, two point three million.
So why can't you look at devising a plan in terms of topping in the stabilization over the course of the next four years, and doing a replenishment out of free cash to the stabilization?
I'll tell you, I, I'm glad you asked that question. I'll tell you exactly why I can't do that, Josh.
That's why I asked the question.
The reasons for that is, we're gonna be going out next year, well, actually, we're gonna go out in February, with a, with a bond issue, which is gonna have the bond rating company come in and look at us. And we wanna make sure that we maintain and we show, in upcoming budgets and everything else, that we're maintaining a five percent level in our stabilization fund. Next year, so say we decide to take money out of the stabilization fund. Right now, you guys are pushing me as hard as you can, Ms. Menugian and Ms. Gilbert, as hard as you can, to increase estimated receipts as much as possible, which will dip into our, our ultimate free cash. There may not be enough free cash to replenish those funds, to get them back up to the five percent or so. And what ends up happening is, when we go out to bond on the Florence Roach School next year, our bond rating will be in jeopardy, because we won't have the five percent, we won't generate the amount of free cash that we have in the past, and I'm very nervous about that. So, I really don't want to mess around with the regular stabilization fund. I wanna leave that as high as we possibly can, keep it at that five percent, at least for another year, until we go out to bond on Florence Roach. My main focus right now is preparing us for that Florence Roach bond issue. I hope that answers your question. Does that make sense to everybody?
Your answer makes sense to me, but there's other ways of slicing the offer.
You haven't seen the budget I'm trying to put together, which by the way, is the next item on my town manager's report.
We're talking about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, or a net difference of a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year, between what you're proposing and what currently exists with short-term notes, correct?
Two different funding sources, one from taxation, and one from cap staff.
We're talking a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay. So, for four years, if you could raise a hundred and forty thousand dollars to pay off that short-term note, on a year-by-year basis, either by increasing pilot payments, or getting certain groups who have yet to make a pilot payment, come forward with a pilot payment, in order to pay this off, wouldn't that be another way of dealing with this?
No. Because how am I gonna, how am I gonna guarantee that that's gonna come? Pilot payments are voluntary.
Gotcha.
So, you know, we've been very successful, Lawrence Academy, Groton School, the Electric Light Commission, Seven Hills, they've been very generous to us, very generous to us. We, they count for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in income each year, which is a gift to balance the budget. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand? Yeah. Which is a gift to balance the budget. I don't, I don't know if I can do that. I know you want, Josh, I appreciate that.
Give me an answer as to how much is owed on that fire truck, right now.
Five hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Thank you. I'm all set for right now.
Okay.
So to me, we were kind of straying into the big-picture budget, that's gonna be a lot easier to talk about when we have anything in front of us.
Yes, correct.
But we have a motion on the table to declare that the life of a fire truck is more than twenty years, which obviously is a, something of a loaded statement, as we've just had all this discussion around it.
It's fun discussion, I love this stuff.
So, all those in favor of declaring that the life of this fire truck will exceed twenty years? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
I abstain.
And you, no-
I don't want, I don't know how long the fire truck's good for.
No, I'm, I'm nervous.
That's, that's not even three people voting.
So, there's two other people who have not-
So who voted yes?
Becky voted yes.
Yep.
And I voted no.
So the two Johns need to vote, cause Josh is saying-
Three members of the board are siding right now.
Fine, I'm gonna vote no, I'm gonna vote no.
All right, so there's two noes, one yes.
You understand what it means, and I mean, it's-
I'd go aye.
It's not fun when you're the fifth person.
I'm, I'm okay with it, if it turns out that's our best, best direction to go in.
So that's three to two in favor?
That has not been said.
Okay with it is not a yea.
Oh.
Yes. I believe you said you was a yea.
Is that a yes?
Mine's a yes.
Okay, so thank you.
Okay, so that's three to two, okay. Thank you. I, listen, this was a great debate, great discussion, I welcome it.
But I, I think, I hope you understand.
I do.
Just saying that the fire truck lasts twenty years is not the same as saying we agree with shifting the debt.
Ultimately, ultimately, this board has to sign those bonds. So if this board doesn't sign those bonds, we can't borrow the money. So I agree, I, Becky, I'm with you a hundred percent.
Okay.
So if I can do my last item in my town manager's report, which is an update on the FY twenty-one budget. So, you may have noticed I'm grayer and balder today than normal, than I was last week, nope, not at all. So we had our budget meetings last week, and we were in the process of trying to finalize the budget. Our projections of a deficit are pretty much accurate. The board's guidance to me, and the finance committee's guidance to me, was to present two budgets. One, a level service budget that shows what it would take to maintain services as they are currently constituted. And the other is to balance the budget based on anticipated revenues. I'm in the process of doing that. I have a very important meeting Wednesday morning at nine o'clock with the school superintendent, the school business manager, in which I'm gonna open up the budget, show them all the numbers, show them exactly where we are, all the revenues, and then talk to them and work with them to try to bridge that gap. I'll have a better update for you next Monday, after I speak to the school committee, the school superintendent, the school business manager, rather, on Wednesday. But I will tell you, it's not going to be an easy budget to present. And there are some hard decisions that the, that the board, and the school committee, and the finance committee, and everybody's gonna have to make. But we're well in the process, and we're trying to, we're trying to get it done. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have relative to that process.
John?
The, the school department seems to be not yet declaring, you know, what they gotta have. And we have this deficit, and it's my feeling that when, when we acknowledged the deficit, we talked about splitting what that deficit is between the two entities. And I think we should hold to that. It's, I, I don't think we should make that a debatable item. It's a fact. And, and that's the way I think we need to go into this. It's not, let's have the school district go through every penny we're looking to spend on the municipal side, and say, well, you don't need to do that, you don't need to do that, you don't need to do this other thing. We'll never get there if we get into that kind of a situation. So, you know, the, the presentation is, this is what you're not gonna get, because we don't have it. And that's your share of it.
Well, the, the guidance from the FinCom and the select board was to split the, split the deficit between the two organizations. And when I meet Wednesday with the school superintendent, the school business manager, I'm literally going to show them the level service budget numbers. I'll show them the town budget. I have nothing to hide. I'll put the entire budget on the table. And I'll say, to bridge this gap, fifty percent of the cost is X. This is what we could afford for the school department, if we, if we go forward with it. And this is what, this is the impact on the municipal side, and here's the cuts we would have to make.
And it's the same monetary impact.
And, and if it is a fifty percent share between the two,
Yep.
which I agree with, we just need to state that, it still nets out as a one million, six hundred thousand dollar increase over last year?
Revenue-wise, Patricia helped me, what are we, about one point four million in new revenues? Yeah, it's about, Josh, about one point four in new revenues. Bud, does that sound right, from what we were looking at? I think it's one point four, Josh, but I get your point.
Are you talking about the revenue, Josh?
The, the new revenues.
I'm talking, I was not-
New revenues.
I was not talking about new revenues. I was talking about, what's the net school increase in the budget over last year?
Their, their anticipated increase, based on their projection, and it's very preliminary, they're still crunching their numbers, was one point six million.
That's what I thought.
Oh, I thought you were asking what the new revenues were.
So if it's one point six, technically, we're putting one point six million dollars up more than last year, if it was to hold that number.
Correct.
So what you would be saying is, based on the numbers that we're looking at, that we need to trim two hundred and fifty thousand, or a net one-three-five increase over last year, if your numbers hold.
If you fully fund the school request at one point six million, that would require a reduction in the municipal budget of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, including any increases to offset health insurance and pensions going up two hundred and twenty thousand alone.
I, I think what Josh is saying is that it's important that we talk about this as, we're not reducing the school allotment, we're giving them a smaller increase
Oh, correct.
than perhaps they had requested.
Correct. Thank you. Now, that smaller increase, that still would be one point three-five million dollars over last year.
Yep.
That's, oh, I'm sorry. That's, so-
It's just interesting that the revenue increase is, is one point four million.
But keep in mind, the schools have, have contractual obligations, as does the town. They have health insurance obligations, as does the town.
I'm not against giving the school more money. What I'm talking about is growth and budget proportional, in the school needs to somehow correlate to municipal growth percentages. And it seems that, no matter how we try and compare the two in comparison, that the schools are increasing at a larger percentage rate, when you include the assessment percentage.
Correct. Their operating assessment increase is less.
I understand. That's what I'm saying, assessment loss. And, and it's, look, we know that schools cost money to run, and we know they're costing more and more. But I want there to be enough appetite and enough money to be able to finance Flow Row, which is solely and squarely on the burden of the taxpayers of the town of Groton. And the more participation that can be given by the administration and the school committee, in not getting us into override territory for this current year, is going to be remembered by the voters when they come to spend the money to build a new school.
I think you, I, I agree with you. I think you will see a proposed operating budget in fiscal twenty-one, that tries its best to maintain what we have now. That's my goal.
John?
I remain concerned that we asked the school district, six months ago, at least, to provide us with a copy of the exact expenditures for FY eighteen. Where did the money go?
You mean nineteen?
We've seen the budgets. I haven't seen it.
No, I know, I'm sorry, I said you mean FY nineteen, not FY twenty.
FY nineteen, okay. Where, where did it go? How did it get spent? Because we're telling them how we're spending everything, and they're not showing us what they're spending it on. Didn't you send that out, Mark?
I think their schedule is different than ours. I think it's, it's disingenuous to talk about they're not giving us information. At this point in time, every conversation we've had is indicative of collaborative process moving forward, and a willingness on the part of the school to, to reduce. We have, we have nothing to indicate anything else. So I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves to be sounding as kind of threatening as we are at this point in time.
I, I don't think we are. I mean, what, what do I do? Do I go out and do a public records request? To get that information?
What is the information you, you're looking for?
What's the burn rate of all money spent?
I wanna see what the expenditures were by line item for FY nineteen.
Well, FY nineteen was-
Not, all I get is budgets. I get C budgets, and budgets, and budgets. Well, what was the actual to the budget? That's what is invisible.
Okay.
And I don't know why.
Mark, can you ask the superintendent if they can provide that?
I think we've, I think we've-
Allison has been working with them on this, on this issue. They have been cooperative. I don't want, I understand John's frustration with the numbers, but I will tell you, the cooperation from the school committee chair, the school superintendent, the school business manager, to me, on information that I need, has been very good. And they have been cooperative. So I don't wanna, I understand the frustration John has, because you have asked for that information. There was a timing issue with the audit, I think Allison was the, was the delay.
Yeah, the state hadn't, the state closed out, I think the, the state didn't complete their closeout until late October.
Yeah, so we'll get to that information. As a matter of fact, I'm meeting with the school superintendent on Wednesday. I will make sure that's the number one issue that I ask. I don't want any board member to be frustrated with, with the process. And I, and I understand John's frustration, so I just don't, I, we're working really cooperatively. We are. But I understand you, John. This is gonna be a fun budget season. Into my, into the ongoing issue, oh, no, back to the agenda, under other business, we very, did I mention that the charter passed?
Yeah.
Section, section three dash two dash two V of the charter authorizes the select board to approve one member and the town manager to sign payroll and expense warrants for the thirty-day period, thirty-day periods at a time. Given the fact that the board is not meeting on the twenty-third or the thirtieth, and it is the holidays, and I already know two of you are gonna be away, getting three signatures is, is difficult. So I would ask the board to authorize me and a member of the board to sign the payroll warrants and expense warrants for the next thirty days, so that the accountant doesn't yell at me. It's all about me getting yelled at.
Sounds good. And realistically, is there a select board member who's willing to volunteer to be that individual? Perfect. That's what I was hoping. All right.
I'm not going anyplace.
So John and I, if the board so votes, select board member Geiger and I will sign the payroll and expense warrants for the next thirty days.
Thirty years?
Thirty days.
No, but why don't we sign next week, the normal one?
When, when you're not available, three of you are not available, John and I will sign them. And nothing, by the way-
And we need to vote that, right?
Yes, you need to vote that. And nothing, by the way, will prevent you from getting copies of, we'll still send copies of the warrants to all of you. It's just getting those signatures was very difficult last week. As a matter of fact, somebody had to come down at the last minute on Friday, right, to sign it. So it's very hard when you're not meeting to get three of you together.
I move pursuant to section three point two point two five of the town of Groton charter, that John Geiger and town manager Mark added, signed both the expense and payroll warrants through the eighth of January two thousand twenty twenty.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, thank you. So into the ongoing issues list briefly, a couple of quick updates. The senior center building project final accounting, I received the final bill for the, the last rec, with the exception of the retainage. We paid that on this one, it was like sixty-eight thousand dollars. So we paid that. There's two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in retainage that has yet to be released. I'm waiting for the architect to give me the final approval on that. So, once that's done, I'll get you the final accounting. But we're within budget. I think we're gonna turn back some money. I just have to get the paperwork done. I'm sorry it's taken so long. There were some issues getting some documentation on warranties and the such, so we're, we're working through that. I hope to have that resolved shortly.
So the, the money that you have left, does that include the fundraising that was done independently?
No, that, that money is separately, and we'll use that to offset debt service payments as we put the operating budget together.
Thank you.
For excluded debt.
Gotcha.
Yep. Prescott Sprinkler, no, no update there, although I will tell you, Bud, Josh, and I are meeting with the Friends of Prescott as an oversight committee on Thursday. So we'll talk to them about what their plans are, where things are going. We'll have an update for the board soon.
So, on that, Mark, they have to, all the procurement has to go through you, right? So, are there potential ways to solicit, or try to get more people to bid, if they put a bid out again?
We will do our best to reach out. We did the last time. We sent bids to, to folks who had expressed an interest. We had advertised it, we reached out, and we'll continue to do the best we can, because we really wanna get this done.
Is there a trade manual for sprinkler installers?
Yeah, the problem, Josh, is we had a sprinkler installer that wanted to do it, and was gonna bid on it.
He watered the plants.
He, he, no, no, he was gonna bid on it. And then come to find out, because it's a project of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, a municipal construction project, you have to be DCAM certified.
Oh, that's right.
This particular vendor wasn't, which is unfortunate, because he would have done it for what we had in the budget, which would have been awesome. But-
You can't do the second floor as one project, and the first floor as another?
No, it's the total cost of the project.
Just thinking outside the box.
No, no, it's good, but you can't do that. So anyway, Josh and I, and Bud will be meeting on Thursday. Water department on the Manganese issue, good news though on the PFAS. I think I sent all that information out to you, on the results. The water department's continuing to work on- I think I sent all that information out to you on the results. Um, the water department's continuing to work on the, on the manganese. At least PFAS is not going to be an issue. Um, did Tom get ahold of you, Allison?
Yes, we still have to talk afternoon.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Huh?
Not yet.
What's that, not yet?
Not yet an issue.
Not yet an issue, thank you. Not yet an issue. So that's good.
However, on this issue, uh, it has come up before. I know I've asked, and I think other people on this board have asked for a conversation about the cost share for the manganese, whatever you call it.
Yep.
Correction.
Yep.
So, uh, I'm assuming they're putting together budgets and all to, for Springtown meeting. So when are we gonna have that conversation?
I put in my proposed operating budget a solution, a recommendation to address that, because I know the board had been talking about that. That is going to be in what you call the section of the budget, major initiatives.
Okay.
So you will see it. There's no way it can be funded in FY '21, but at least it's something for you to debate and discuss. So during our budget issues, I had a conversation with the water commission, and I gave them my idea. Bud and, and John were part of that conversation. And there wa, there is a proposal that I have, but there's no way FY '21, we're gonna be able to implement my suggestion if we wanna stay within the level services issue. But you'll see it in the budget, Becky. It's there. So I'm glad you asked.
So that means we will then discuss that?
Correct.
And with the water commissioners?
Absolutely.
Cause we, I mean, we had that one meeting.
Right. So is it tying in with that, Mark? I think what we're waiting for, Becky, is some determination from council as to whether this is a litigation category, which puts us in executive session or not, which keeps us out of executive session.
Right.
Does town council have that original letter that, that came to you in DEP, from DEP in February?
I believe I gave it to him the last time he was here for his office hours.
Okay. And is that enough for them to determine where we're at? I mean, how long do we, we can't?
Until we get the proposed, um, consent order, I can't do anything. I don't know where it is. Tom has sent repeated requests into DEP. I have sent in a request to DEP. I don't know why they haven't gotten to us yet, Allison. I'm getting extremely frustrated with, with the process.
So they sent us a letter in February saying that we needed to negotiate with them by September 1st.
And we did that.
And we did. And now, it, wasn't there some documentation of that September 1st meeting that sort of said?
There, there is, and they said that they would get us the consent order in November. This is December 9th. Still don't have it.
Do they understand that their consent order will have impacts on, um, rates that need to be set by the water commissioners moving forward?
They are fully aware of all that, Joshua. Fully aware of all that. I'm, I'm frustrated, but I'm continuing to work on it.
So what, what Mark has put forward is one possible scenario of how the expense would be shared between ratepayers and tax, uh, jet, taxpayers. Um, we haven't seen alternatives to that. He's thinking ahead. I think that's great. But we have no, no way, you know, to look at how that split gets made.
Right.
And Bud and I both suggested strongly, uh, during the, the, the budget reviews with the Water Enterprise Fund people, that they needed to make that visible to us, so that we can look there and say, well, if, if we shift this over, this is what it'll do to the taxpayers, and this is what it'll do to the ratepayers.
Right.
And be able to, to do some ups and downs to try to find the best, the best balance that we can for everybody.
Did they seem receptive to that?
They're, uh, I mean, they're working on it now.
Okay.
Uh, seeing it.
I saw a document late today that I haven't really had a chance to, to do anything but say, okay, somebody's making some numbers show up, um, to see, you know, to see how that works.
Right. I mean, I think in retrospect, that one meeting that we had, well, we didn't have enough time to cover everything. I know I had a conversation with one of the water commissioners later, and, and I asked, you know, have you discussed possibly sharing the cost? And he said, well, we legally, we don't have access to the town's, the general fund. So I understand that, you know, they maybe needed to hear from us that we want them to think about that, but yes, now we want to get that information and maybe putting it together.
To get taxpayer help?
Right.
We've got to approve it.
Right, absolutely.
And I can't, it's big bucks, and I can't do that with-
Right. No information.
Without the information, of course not. No, no, no.
They have a meeting tomorrow, I think.
Yep, Wednesday.
I, I, and they're setting rates, that's what I heard. But I don't know what they're setting rates for.
And are they setting rates based on some assumption of town participation or not?
With and without town help. Um-
But are they setting the, I mean-
They're setting the rates right now without town help.
And based on the DEP, on the consent order that hasn't arrived?
No, based on the upgrades to the treatment plant of in the neighborhood of $7.5 million.
Which is what, yeah. So how do we, and no one may have this answer, but we, we have the water commissioners, who are a separate entity, moving forward with a solution that, that may well be the right solution, that the select board doesn't understand, because we don't know whether we can discuss this in executive session or open session. They're gonna set rates based on no town participation. I, I mean, this is, we are still speeding headfirst into a nightmare.
They are not a separate entity. They exist because this town chose to create an enterprise fund for the water department. If the water department fails, the burden comes to the town. So it's not like the district, which is a totally separate financial entity.
Okay.
So we have an oversight responsibility, because we guarantee an underwrite what they're doing.
Yeah.
And when it, when it, I don't wanna get involved in, you know, what they charge per hour. They've got rules and regulations that they're supposed to meet, right?
Right.
But when you step over and say, and we're gonna pull money from the taxpayers, now you just jumped into my backyard.
Well, I think the point is that they-
Front yard.
If, if they go ahead as if they're not getting any taxpayer money, then, and then we have the discussion about, well, we might consider approving some taxpayer money. I mean, it just, it does seem a little cart before the horse-ish.
Yes, I agree.
The problem is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Allison.
No, so I was gonna say, Mark, how, what, what do you need from us, or what does this board need to do to get some level of coordination with the water commissioners?
I just really wanna get us all back in the room together, so I need to talk to town council to find out how we can all get back in the room together to talk.
Thought you need the consent order.
I need that consent order.
Understood. So how do we get the water commissioners then, or, or whether we do it, or you do it, or how, how do they stop forward progress and action until they get the consent?
I could ask Tom to have them hold off on setting rates until after we need it to set up. So I'll talk to Tom tomorrow.
I think that needs to happen. I don't know where other people are.
If that's the direction the board wants me to take, I'll do it.
I think we have a problem.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Done.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I understand the frustration. It's, it's, it is. It, I, I get it a hundred percent.
And I think we, you know, we understand where they're at and where you're at, too. It's not-
So on the MS4 permit, um, on the MS4 permit, the, uh, we had a meeting today with our engineering consultant. The plan is to hold public hearings in January, February on, on the, on the, uh, on any proposal to find what is needed, but the first step is exactly what is needed. So we are right now in the process. They met this afternoon. We are putting together what we think we need to do to comply with the MS4 permit, getting cost estimates that will lead to, okay, if we need X amount of dollars based on compliance with the MS4 permit, and we need to raise this amount of money, how are we going to raise that money? So they're doing a really good job. We started off today. They have a plan in place. The, uh, stormwater management committee, the Earth and Moon Stormwater Management Committee is gonna lead the public effort, along with our, uh, public works director and our consultant from Environmental Partners. So that is well underway. It is our intent to bring a, a warrant article to the Springtown meeting, obviously going through the select board first, because you have to approve whatever we do. Uh, we're learning from other communities' mistakes, and I have to say thank you to our town accountant for really slamming the brakes on us and straightening us up. So she said, knock it off. And so we did. So thank, thanks, Patricia.
Maybe we should have her talk to the water commissioner.
Maybe. Um, as far as the poly styrene containers, I sent you a sample bylaw. You would ask for that. I think I sent that out to you last week. And I sent it to the board of health, too.
Okay.
So I don't know what they're gonna do. I don't know, Becky, if you've had another conversation.
I did have a conversation, uh, just recently. Um, I think that they will consider it. I said we'd like them to choose a bylaw that's already, you know, let's avoid reinventing the wheel, and choose one that somebody else has already approved, as long as you think it's a good one, and then tell us.
Yep. And town council did provide us with that, and I did forward it off to everybody.
You know, I asked Mark to get town council to, to check and see if town council had one that has passed.
Right, I think that's what we said.
And that's what we said.
And that's a starting place.
Right, absolutely.
And that's what we provide.
Very smart. Thank you.
Uh, Green Communities application. Becky, you said you had some questions. We're just waiting to hear back. We got our application in on the 22nd. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, so I took a look, um, in detail at this finally. Thank you, cause I was out of town when they were here, and John gave me the, uh, materials.
I forwarded you a bunch of stuff today, too. Did you get a list?
Yes, I saw that, too. And I had some conversation with Karen Chapman. I found a typo in there. Could you ex, I noticed that, that, you know, there's this inventory of buildings, and there, in the narrative, there's a, a list of buildings. Um, Prescott was mentioned in the narrative, but is not included in this spreadsheet at all. Could you explain the reasoning on that?
Yeah, because we do not, we, we leased that building to an outside entity, so we did not include it in our application. Um, even though it's a town building, it was similar to Hazel Grove, because we leased those out to a separate entity. We don't control it, and it, it's under their management control. We did not include it in our, in our application for that reason.
So when you said-
We talked about that when we met.
So, so I guess part of my question was, are there other town buildings that were not included in Hazel Grove, I guess is one?
Hazel Grove and Prescott, yep.
Anything else that was not?
Legion Hall was, Town Hall, Public Works, well, Public Works, cause it's under construction. Senior Center, cause it was under construction.
Uh-huh.
Um, the library was, Public Safety Building, the two fires, three fire stations were.
Well, yeah, so-
So everything but those two. I, I believe Prescott, Hazel Grove, Senior Center, Public Works.
Okay. But then the West Groton Fire Station, I thought we were pretty clear that that building was kinda excess and not-
We haven't made a final decision, so we included it.
What about the West Groton DPW Rose?
That's, that was included, too. Thank you, Josh.
And the Florence Road School, I saw was included, but, I mean, we wouldn't invest any money in that building right now while we're in this process of deciding.
I will tell you, there is no, you gotta remember, there's no guarantee that the Town of Groton is going to appropriate whatever it takes to build a new school, so we may have to make some other improvements to that building as we own it, so we included it. Doesn't mean we're gonna go for that money and spend it, but it needed to be there just in case. That was the thought process, anyway. I think it made sense.
So I guess I would have probably had a different opinion about Prescott, that we ultimately own it, and we don't, you know, it may, the other entity that we're leasing to may be very successful, and we may not have to do anything, but long-term maintenance of the building is still not our responsibility. I think it, it's not part of the lease, that they would, they would do heavy-duty renovation, for instance, or even energy improvement. I think, I'm, I-
Question.
I think that in the lease, you know, I don't, I don't know precisely, but I think there could well be energy improvement projects that we might wanna do. And I guess if there is a question that we haven't generated enough, um, potential energy savings to even make it into the program, would, would have, would including Prescott solve that problem?
I don't think that would put us, that wouldn't put us over the top.
When do we hear back? Do we know?
I think, uh, John, Karen told us, is it January?
I think so, like towards the end of Jan-
Yeah, towards the end of January, I believe we'd hear.
They don't do too much between the 15th of December and the 8th of January.
As we're canceling a lot of meetings.
Right, it seems to me. So we had a big meeting here on January 17th last year explaining it, and I think that they were saying that they were just some new ones that had been awarded at that point, so.
Yeah, I think it's mid, mid-January, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that large amount of the initial grant that we-
$165,000?
Are hoping to, we will get, um, what you're telling me is, we'll spend that on projects that, for the most part, are not included in our regular budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, Florence Road Elementary School, the committee, the building committee's meeting tomorrow. Uh, still underway going forward with that project, paying bills, figuring out what we're gonna do, community meetings, safety meetings. I think I'm gonna be involved in a security meeting coming up soon. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on with that project as well. Library roof repair, uh, full disclosure, because the snow came during the construction period, there were some leaks. Uh, due no fault of anybody's, but the contractor's responsible for it and is taking, taking care of it, so that project is still moving forward. Highway garage renovations, uh, John, I think you said you had an opportunity to go through there last week with Tommy. Uh, that project continues to go really, really well, and I'm very excited about that. So thankfully-
End of the month?
I, you, most of it would be end of the month. There's still the generator piece and some other things, so mid, mid, mid-January right now. But I will tell you, thankfully, we got the pavement down before the snow came, or otherwise, that would have been a disaster. So very, very lucky that we got that pavement down. Saved a lot of hassles. And that's all I have.
The, uh, the little snowstorm we had, first part of last week, kinda kept Tom and I from having much time to-
Yes.
Cycle through, so I'll get out there, you know, sometime this week and meet with him. But every time I've been out there, I continue to be very impressed with how everything's being done.
Yeah, we gotta really, like I said, I say this to you every week, we have an awesome contractor. Awesome contractor.
And they've been able to operate the department, right?
Yep.
Tom Delaney and his crew has been amazing throughout this entire process, because they're, they're basically working out of the transfer station in the West Groton Garage, and they're really just pulling everything together really, really well. That's all I have.
All right. Any liaison reports? We have one set of minutes for a regularly scheduled meeting through November 25th.
I know that we approved the regularly scheduled meeting of November 25th, 2019.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and the only other piece that I'll throw out to the board before we close, I should have done it at the beginning, is that the MMA conference is coming up in January, um, which is the Mass Municipal Association. It's in Boston Friday to Saturday. Unfortunately, the dates coincide with the FINCOM selected meeting for our budgeting, so it seems like realistically, no one is going to be able to.
Well, we're gonna go in Friday. We always go into the opening session on Friday. I think Dawn and I and a few other department heads will be going in. And any board member that you wanna come in on Friday with us, please do.
Will somebody be able to be there late on Saturday to get the award?
Mike, Mike Jason will be there to get the award.
Okay.
Once the finance committee told us the 25th was the preferred date, um, Mike Jason will go in and accept, it's his award, so he should be there.
I mean, the finance thing is supposed to be over by 1:00, right?
If you wanna head in afterwards, sure.
Okay. So if anyone's interested in going in on Friday, kinda, let's start thinking about that. The 24th and 25th. All right, otherwise we are adjourned.